All right. Okay. This is the. Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on September 22, 2021 at 7:30 pursuant to section 13 of the open public meet, open public meeting that adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the clerk of Princeton on September 17, 2021, and has been posted, has been posted on the municipal website, wwwprincetonnj.gov. Pursuant to executive order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom. Was transmitted to the Princeton Packet. Was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, The Times, and filed with the clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are and ought to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the clerk of Princeton. Notices are also placed on all windows, doors of the municipal complex. Okay. Claudia, can you call the roll?
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Cannonbaum? Ms. Chen? Mr. Stein?
Here.
Donna?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't, I, the agenda's on, I have two computers and I can't get the agenda up, but we have two resolutions this evening.
Right.
I believe.
Yeah, the first is 33 Green Street.
Okay. And the information was in your packets. So has everybody had an opportunity to read it? And if so, are there any comments? And if not, if someone would like to make a motion?
No move.
Second.
Thank you. Claudia?
Mr. Floyd?
Claudia?
Floyd?
Can you call the roll?
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
At the next resolution?
On drive. So case number, I was a D variance for Princeton Community Village. I don't have the case number, but.
I don't know what it is. There was no case number because there was no escrow posted until recently.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I do, I got the agenda back. I'm sorry, I have the agenda back now. Okay, so again, once again, this the resolution is in your packet. If if everybody's read it and there are no questions or changes, if someone would like to make a motion for approval.
Will of approval, Floyd?
Second.
Thank you, Donna.
Floyd?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Was I, Claudia, was I part of that or was I not?
No, you were.
Okay. All right. Okay, we have four four cases this evening. The first is 229 Pretty Brook. It's case number Z19-792, block 3501, lots six and seven in the R1 zone.
On this note, the applicant needed to notice they did, and it's in order.
Okay, thank you. Okay, who's going to start? Derek, can you read your memo, please?
Sure. As you'll recall, the applicant received, the applicant is the Pretty Brook Tennis Club. They received a use variance. It's bifurcated with related bulk variances on July 22, 2020, constructed 8,600 square foot, one-story building consisting of additional indoor tennis court and indoor squash courts. The resolution of approval was granted on August 26, 2020 and published on September 4, 2020. The applicant is seeking a one or two-year extension within which they will file the required site plan for the above referenced project. Section 10B 328, which governs limits, time limits on variances, requires that any cases of a variances that involve the issuance of construction permits, the variance shall terminate one year after the granting of the variance unless a construction permit is applied for within such one-year period or when in such greater time limit as the Board of Adjustment shall grant upon a showing of good cause made by the applicant. The time limitations that have been fixed in accordance with the foregoing may thereafter be extended upon application to the Board of Adjustment with notice as required for variance hearings, provided that the application shall be made prior to the expiration of the time limitation sought to be extended and upon showing of a good cause made by the applicant before the board, the board may extend the time limitation by resolution. The applicant is unable to secure construction permits within this time period and is complied with a noticing requirement. They're seeking a one or two-year extension which the ordinance permits. The ordinance only applicant is seeking additional time to receive the required outside agency approvals from the DRCC and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. That's my memo. If you have any questions.
I do, I have one question.
Mr. Breger, before you continue, my apologies, I didn't swear you in. Do you swear firm your testimony this evening and the testimony you just gave is truthful?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek, you said one or two-year extension.
Yeah, the ordinance doesn't really make a.
It's clear it's only one. I noticed for only one.
All right, thank you. Okay. Mr. Reed, do you want to continue?
Yes, I am Kathy Knight, the architect and project manager is trying to join. I don't know if Claudia can help her get in. She said, I can see on the screen. Can you see me? I said, can't. She said Claudia will probably let me in. I don't know if Claudia has that hour.
I don't see her name. Is it Kathy? Isn't under?
Yes, Kathy. Is there any way?
She's not there.
Okay, I don't know what to do about that. Perhaps I will give you the outset. Maybe she'll get in and maybe you'll be satisfied with it, just the brief proceed that I give you.
Excuse me, excuse me, one second before you continue. I'm going to sit down. I'm standing now. I'm going to sit. So if I disappear from the screen, I am actually here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, in any case, while we were trying to get Kathy in, we, with COVID and everything, we have been negotiating with DEP and the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission on this site for the better part of a year. Things did not go fast. People went on vacation, so we have been diligently pursuing this. We're very close. We're reworking the plans. There have been no official plans, but we're reworking the plans. It would not make any sense for us to have filed and gotten a building permit without knowing exactly what those two regulatory agencies are going to want. So I'm not even sure that a year's extension will be enough, but a year is all that is permitted in your ordinance. So I am seeking the year and if we do not have a construction permit by August 22 of, or I think it's August 22 of next year, I will probably just file back with you for the various variances and ask to renew them through the regular variance process. I am not quite sure we'll be able to get everything done. We have to work with the mitigation bank, believe it or not, for the wetlands. So anyway, I will take the one-year extension if you will grant it to me. If you want me to go over the details or we can do this quickly and I can just ask for you to grant the extension.
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
Are any of the, any of the negotiations you're having with the DNR canal people going to affect the basis of our approval?
I don't think I can say the answer to that as yet. They may want a retaining wall, which may or may not affect, we have variances for, you know, number of parking spaces, loading space, parking number, that kind of thing. It may or may not affect the FAR and the other issues that we have there, but we have not finally designed against what they are requiring. So I cannot answer that question honestly. Kathy Knight's name has appeared on my screen. Kathy, there you are, just in time.
Ms. Knight, we're just going to swear you in quickly since you're going to give testimony. Do you swear firm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, Kathy, the question was, were some of the things we're working on with the environmental regulatory agencies going to change the requirements of our variances or the scope or need for our variances? And I don't think we can answer that question straightforwardly as yet. I don't think we know exactly what they're going to be requiring.
I, I could be speaking out of turn, but I didn't think anything was going to affect our variance at this point. We have gone through pre-application meeting with the DEP and we're moving forward with a specific application for the repairian zone. We've gone through a pre-application meeting with DRCC and we're preparing a submission, a formal submission to them. We reviewed with the civil engineer, but we've done a lot of things in this past year, but it's, you know, we still got a way to.
Okay, I hope that answers the question. We don't believe that there'll be a change in, if there are, we will of course be coming back because there was a use variance, we'll be coming back to this board. And if we have to renew or expand during the site planning process, you'll certainly have a chance to grant or not grant any expansion of the variances that were granted. Right now, though, we're looking just for the confidence to press on with what we have so that we know we're not spinning our wheels. And if changes come up, we'll certainly, you know, they'll be reflected in the plans and, you know, clearly noted in the next application.
Okay, thank you.
I would just, if you'd like me to go through the variances we received or they're in both my notice and I'm just looking to extend essentially the resolution of approval with the eight variances that we received previously, including the use variance for the new tennis court.
Why don't you just run through them very quickly?
All right, we had a use variance for a tennis court and an additional squash court. We had a floor area ratio variance, we had impervious coverage variance, we had a height variance, very small. The number of parking spaces or parking is what it is. We had a paving requirement. I don't think anyone wanted to pave next to the pond there in this rural area. We took out a loading space and we took out parking screening. There were eight variances. They are, as I say, if you would like more detail, the exact amount of those variances is listed in my notice. I took the entire, you know, I made sure that every detail was in there in case anyone had a question. I can review them in more specificity if you wish.
Do any of the board members have any, would they like a further explanation of the variances? Okay, let's keep going.
That's pretty much my presentation. I feel we have been doing what we can and as I say, COVID did not speed up the process of negotiating with DEP and the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission.
Okay. All right. Do the board, any, anyone on the board have any questions of the architect or the attorney? Okay. Karen, I believe we have to open this up to the public.
Correct.
So is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this application? Claudia, is there anyone out there?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Give it a second here. All right, let's close the public portion. And Mr. Reed, if there, if you don't want to, if you'd like to make a closing statement or just let us go into executive session.
I think I'd be repeating myself. This is not, it's not too much rocket science involved with this.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go into executive session. If the board has any questions or comments, let's discuss them. If not, if someone would like to make a motion.
Herman Cohen, there's a hand.
Oh, okay, let's go back.
Anybody can hear me?
We can't, we can't, we can't see you, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, I'm a board member of the Pondview Association here bordering right to the tennis club.
Mr. Fenner, we need, we need to try and see you. Can you get your video operational?
I thought it was, but I'm not familiar very much with the Zoom system.
Join the.
Analyst, let me.
In the bottom left-hand corner of your screen, there should be a little next to the, next to the sound, there should be a little monitor with a, most probably with a red line through it. If you click on that, your monitor would open up. I think you're muted now. We lost sound. Okay. Mr. Fenner, I think you turned, you muted your, your microphone.
Yeah.
Nope, there you go. The, the mic's working.
Okay. What about?
There you are.
There you are.
All right.
Okay, there it worked.
Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Fenner, we need to swear you in. Do you swear firm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I swear.
All right, and you started to say, are you, you say you're the president of?
No, no, no. I said I'm a board member of the.
Okay. All right.
I just wanted to introduce with the following. We received this public notice on the 16th. And today is the 22nd. We pass this on to our lawyer to see if this has any reverberations on our association, on the grounds, common grounds, whatever. And we haven't received yet the information back because the timing we got, in my opinion, was very short. And the question was if this has any impact on our association. We border directly with this tennis club.
Ms. Knight or Mr. Reed, would you like to respond to that?
I believe the portions of the common area are all open spaces. Would that be correct?
Yes.
We do not border against any of your members directly on, on, on any side.
You mean on any housing?
Yes.
Okay, but you border common areas, right?
Yes, that is correct. So they are, they are currently open space. We did notice the association the first time around and had a hearing and I don't know if anyone from your group commented at the original hearing, but I believe you had plenty of notice. I did mail the notice on the 10th and it took, what, eight, six, six to eight days for them to deliver the certified mail, which is unfortunate and, you know, that not, not anything under our control. We met the notice requirements. But I'm never a hard guy. If you think there might be a problem, we could push if, if you're, when I, you know, we, as I say, we, you had a good opportunity a year ago. And I, you know, we're, we're building a new indoor tennis court and taking care of the environmental problems. I don't believe you were here to hear that, but.
That is.
Very closely.
I was not a member of the board at that time.
With the DEP. So the board will have to decide if they want to give you some additional time to have your attorney weigh in. But that's up to them. I'm not going to insist on a vote if you are feeling that you have not been properly given a chance to be represented here.
Thank you.
If I could just weigh in a couple of other comments. The club did invite the Pondview members to an open house at our club and I believe it was February of 2020. And we had, I, I don't know if we had one or zero members attend to the open house for the information. So it was extended to all the Pondview members. And just for whatever, for your comfort, when part of the testimony, the last time around the application, any of the work that we're proposing will be very difficult to see from your neighborhood. It's a heavily wooded site and it's very difficult to see anything that we're proposing in the construction through, from any of your neighbors' houses because of the tree coverage. But that was just part of our, our testimony a year ago.
I see. My only concern and, and I, I don't know what the opinion is of the lawyer at this point is that the noise level may be increased because more traffic of cars and there's also the school next door, PDS. And also in addition to noise, I had another point, which was.
These are indoor facilities, Mr. Fenner. You're indoors.
It's, it's indoors, okay. But what about the, the cars driving in more space for parking, et cetera, et cetera, on Pretty Brook Road?
I can perhaps address that, sorry.
Possibly four additional cars in the winter when nobody else is using the outdoor courts. You're going to have perhaps four people playing tennis and a maximum of six people playing squash in addition to our court. So normally our lot is fullest in the summer. No one will be using the lot except the people using the indoor facilities and one or two of our things are going to be a lot fewer people in the wintertime than there are there in the summertime. Substantially fewer. There's pool and five other tennis courts that are generally good use during the day. So the traffic will never be more than it is at our, our peaks or even, you know, from late spring to early fall.
I see. If I could just listen also to our lawyer's opinion, if you give me a chance for one more week, I would appreciate it.
Would have to be, it would have to be a month. It would have to be another month.
Oh.
We, we only meet once a month.
I see. Well, I, I don't think I can take the decision in the name of all the board. I would have to consult with my colleagues. But as I see it, if it's only that and that's the only additional noise level we might get, and I'm just talking about noise at this point. I don't know if there is any other issue from my side. It's, it's okay. This is what I will transmit to the board.
Okay, so you would like us to, you would like the applicant to defer the decision, continue it to the next hearing?
Right. Not the next year, to the next meeting. Is the?
Well, the next, the next meeting, the next meeting will be the same as we're having this evening.
Okay, if that could be done, great. And I'm very sorry about the whole thing, but we received the information on the 16th. And as I said, this was given to our lawyers, but we haven't received any response at this point.
We have been exceptionally good neighbors through our entire career, so we're not going to press the issue tonight. So Mr. Ferreira would like an extension and it's all right with the board. We're okay.
Okay, my name is Flavio Fenner.
Fenner.
Thank you.
Michael, you have a question?
Yeah, just a, a question for the board member. Do you know if your attorney, your current attorney is the same attorney from a year ago? When this was approved, because we're not changing anything from the approval, it's just extending some time. So who's your attorney now?
As you won't believe it, I don't know his name. We always change.
Okay.
Yeah, as, as Mr. Floyd, as Mr. Floyd said, the only change, it's not even a change. The only thing where the applicant's asking for is another year to move forward.
For the variance.
Nothing has changed in the application.
And there will certainly be another crack at this at the site plan. We will be coming back to the zoning board of adjustment with notice again. And if you let this go through, I will give you earlier notice next time by an additional 15 days or something like that. And that could be in this resolution that we will notice the notice you because nothing will be constructed, nothing will be approved until we have been through the site plan matter. And your noise or crowding or site issues could be taken up at that point.
Yeah, but we could never recall if I have an opinion against it from the lawyer. I don't know.
Okay, so I guess, I guess we'll, Mr. Reed, are you okay with this? We're going to, we'll carry this until the next.
Can we carry it without having to renotice is my.
You can. We just, we will just make clear tonight. It's being carried to, it's the October 27th, right? Okay.
Do we have a say in this? Do we?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All we're doing is, all we're doing is extending an already approved variance. Why wait another month? I mean, we have enough cases on our workload. We don't need another case next month.
Well, I mean, I, Stephen, I understand, but if, if a neighbor has a question and they want advice at council, I think it's, I think it's appropriate, given the fact that they didn't receive it until, what, six days before the hearing, Karen?
Yeah, but I mean, they did, the applicant has provided proof that it was mailed within the time period prescribed by the state statute. So unfortunately, the mail takes along, you know, how long it takes to deliver, once the applicant mails it certified, that's out of their hands now. So it may be because of COVID, things are taking longer or maybe there's other issues, but they certainly sent their noticing in, in a timely manner. So I, I understand that the neighbor says it took a long time to reach us, but that's, the applicant conducted themselves properly with respect to noticing. Yeah. It's also published in the newspaper. That's true. It was also. On our website. Yeah.
Well, you know what? Let's, let's just see if any of the board members have an opinion on this one way or the other.
Thank you very much.
Eve, what do you think?
I, yeah, I, I mean, we aren't two things, we aren't changing anything. We're postponing the time when we will talk about this. At which time, all, all of any concerns that neighbors would have could, could be raised at that time.
Yes, it will be a new site plan application.
Can, can we do it this way? That you, you just sent us an information where it says this was approved by your board last year on 2020? Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Say that again, please, Mr. Fenner.
Yes, if you could send some mail saying that this was approved by our board in 2020. And at this time, this is only a variance to extend the existing variance for one year, then.
Notice, that's what the notice said. The notice that you sent to your lawyer, that's what it said.
I have the, the notice right in front of me and you say that there is information that this was approved by our board in 2020?
That they're applying for an extension.
No, I know that it is an extension. The question is whether it was approved or not.
It was approved and that's what they're asking for.
No, no, by our, by our board.
Your board.
No, your board doesn't have.
Your board doesn't get the vote on it.
We have no knowledge if your board approved it.
Correct, correct.
They don't need to.
And we don't, that's not, your approval is not.
No, no, I.
Is not part of the application.
I'm, I. I'm, I, I didn't express myself correctly.
Sure.
What I wanted to say is, whatever observation I have. If the observation I'm trying to make is superfluous because it was already approved. By our previous board. In a sense that we have no comments against it, go ahead with your variance, we have no opposition.
Got it.
If, if this is the case, send me this information, I have no problem.
Can somebody send him the copy of the resolution?
Yes, but I think also uh, it sounds like what Mr. Flinner's looking for is maybe. Confirmation that their board got noticing, which we have, it's in the, you know, it's in the board records, or Mr. Reed. Could send him a copy of his certified slip to say we gave it to your board. And the resolution spells out who commented and what they said. So we could send you the resolution and Mr. Reed, if you could just send Mr. Flinner confirmation that. His board was noticed. Um.
And that the board has no, has no opposition. Our board, it doesn't make.
It didn't make any comment.
Make any comment.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so based on that, we'll continue this evening with this. Okay.
I am, I'm willing to have a condition. Of this extension that if we come in for site plan in a timely fashion, we will give them an additional ten days notice.
That's fine.
Sometimes the thing goes to New Brunswick or wherever their uh, association uh, manager is, that has to be sent back. So if you'd like to put that in as a condition, that'd be fine, we'll give them an extra ten days notice over the statutory.
I would appreciate that sincerely.
Okay, and Mr. Fenner, now you're, you're okay with us moving forward tonight?
Right, based on what has been mentioned by you, uh, by your members. That this has been uh, seen by our board already uh, in two thousand twenty. And no comment uh, was received from uh, uh, by you from our side. Then this is okay, because for me, if, if there, nobody makes a comment, it's uh, either a major failure or. Uh, they're agreed, they have no.
Very good, thank you. Um, do any other board members have any questions? Or want to discuss anything with this application? If not, will someone make a motion?
Low approval of a uh, one-year extension.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Last, last question, the information will send, will be sent then to the same address as we, where we received the, the public notice, correct?
Yes. It goes, it goes to your management company, I believe.
Oh, that's great, yes, that, you're absolutely right.
Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fenner, thank you very much. Mr. Reed, Ms. Knight, thank you all.
Kathy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for all the patience with me.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, um. Can I just, let me go back here and get the next case, the next case is, I believe is um. Patton Avenue, one, one sixty Patton. Let me just get, let me just get to the uh, agenda.
I'm recusing myself from this one.
Okay. Okay, our next hearing is. One sixty Patton Avenue, case number Z twenty-one dash oh fifty-one. Block fifty-three point oh seven, lot one oh seven in the R two zone. Um. Is the applicant here this evening?
Richard Schatzman, attorney, uh. He's uh, Farrell's here and Mr. Uh. Brackle, are you in? Claudia?
Okay.
Let's note the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction.
Good, thank you. Uh, Derek, can you read your memo on this?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Summarize it.
Sure, uh. The owners of the property at one sixty Patton Avenue, Peter and Shanice Farrell. Are seeking a C two variance to permit a second floor addition to an existing home, an exception to the rear yard setback. Properties located in the R two zone and um, subject to use of bulk regulations in seventeen A. Two thirty-nine and two forty of the former Princeton Borough Land Use ordinance, subject. Lot is complying with respect to the applicable bulk requirements. Subject uh, property, the house is not complying with regard to the rear yard setback, the requirement thirty-five in the existing thirty-one. The applicant is proposing to construct a second floor addition over the existing two-car garage, the addition will create two new bedrooms. A second floor addition is also proposed above the existing first floor porch, porch, excuse me. The two proposed additions violate the rear yard setback uh. To the second floor garage, the requirement is thirty-five feet in the exist, the proposed will be thirty-two point six feet, and then um. It's uh, also bumps out a little bit, and the other um, non-compliance is thirty-four point seven feet, they're seeking a C two variance. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Okay. All right. Mr. Schatzman?
Yes, sir.
Would you like?
Mr. Brackle will be sworn in, please, by uh, Ms. Casey.
Uh, Mr. Brackle, oh, there you are, um, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, would, Mr. Brack, would you give the benefit of your professional experience and your uh, licenses?
I'm a licensed uh, professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, uh, I have my undergraduate degree from N J I T. I've been doing site plans and so forth for thirty-five years.
Hey, I, we'll, we'll, uh, I think we'll accept you as an expert witness.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and you've uh, prepared the plans, or the plans were prepared under your direction. You've seen the site and you're familiar with the Princeton Land Development Order, it's correct.
I am.
Would you give us an overview with a, maybe a shared screen of what this proposal is in pictorial form? Mr. Uh, Bridger explained it narratively very well, the baby, a, a quick picture of what we're doing here will help the board. In their understanding of the proposal.
Mr. Schatzman, would you like this to be an exhibit?
Uh, it's, it's already submitted. But if you want to make it as exhibit, we'll make it A one uh, September twenty-second.
Okay.
That's the uh. Derek mentioned that the proposal in front of you is to add an addition to the second floor of the existing dwelling, which would be. Essentially on the west side of the existing home. And on top of that, they're gonna uh, put a porch area above the existing porch that's on the first floor. The existing addition is gonna hang over the uh, first floor by approximately two feet on either side. Uh, which will extend uh, beyond the existing wall, obviously, and creating this uh, variance. Cause it uh, part of the home is extended uh, thirty-one feet in the rear yard. So we're not uh, increasing the request or the, the variance, we're just uh, it's just as a result of this addition, we're. In- increasing into the thirty-five foot setback area, or approaching, if you will. That's, that's essentially it in a nutshell.
And uh, the uh, the uh, this thing has the same materials, roof. Et cetera, as the uh, house has now, am I correct, there's no?
That is correct.
Okay. And uh, there's no stormwater problems or any other problems uh?
We, we, uh, this project will, will not generate a stormwater management system.
Okay.
It doesn't meet the requirement.
Okay. Um, and uh, is there any questions, Mr. Brackle?
I don't have any, any board members have any questions of the engineer? Okay, please continue.
Uh, I just have the uh. Applicants just be sworn in and just state the reason why they need, they like this addition, if approved by the board. So we'll.
Sure.
For Mrs. Farrell, be sworn, please.
Yes, you both swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Uh, just state for the board's uh, edification why you are. Need this uh, addition to your house now on, on uh. Cedar Lane and.
Yes, um, so we bought our house in nineteen ninety, we raised our two little girls here. Who are now adults who live somewhere else, and um, it's a three-bedroom house, one of the bedrooms is pretty small. Um, they both have significant others now, so when they come home, it's incredibly crowded. I would like to, seven hundred and three-bedroom house, we would really love to have a four-bedroom house. And it also gives us some space in one of the bedrooms to kind of set up an office space, because the house. Doesn't really have that now, and it gets a little chaotic. And we just wanted to be comfortable for our kids to come home and visit us with their significant others and hopefully some grandkids someday.
Okay, any questions of the applicant?
I don't have any, any board members have any questions? Okay, all right, um, Mr. Schatzman?
Well, the uh. It's a C two variance as stated by Mr. Bridger, and it. Under forty-five, forty colon fifty-five D two promotes establishment of a popular, appropriate population density. Uh, and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities. It preserves the environment, there's no stormwater or anything that changes, the F A R. Uh, meets the R two zone, it prevent, it provides sufficient space in an appropriate location for a. Residential use. It encourages also a nice visual environment, it's a house, as you can look at the architectural plans around that. And it's the creative development and in coordinates various public. The private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view to lessening the cost of such development. To be more efficient use of the land, to be more efficient use of the land, and these are all sections of forty. Colon fifty-five D hyphen two. And we submit that there, there's no real detriment in the benefit of making this a more modern house and to accommodate the Farrell's. Needs outweigh any detriments and really a better. Uh, by rounding it out the house, it's also a better deal for the municipality under Calhoun versus Warren Township, and that's it.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, um, if there are no other presentations, I'll, we'll, do any board members have a question of the. Applicant, the engineer, or the attorney, Mr. Floyd?
Yeah, I just want to get an understanding of the building height. Um, I know on the application, it says it's, you know, it's twenty-eight feet. On the drawings, there's grade at property line, there's lines that show thirty-two four, maybe Mr. Bridger can. Explain to me or the engineer how it ends up at twenty-eight? On.
Well, the, the offsets, the thirty-two four you're referring to.
Yes.
Is the, is, is the offset to the building, this from the property line.
Okay.
So that, so any, any of that, that, and that goes for that forty-five seventeen is an offset to the peak from the property line.
Okay.
And so that's how we figure out the, the building height from that. You know, from the grade over to the, to the peak. Uh, well, actually, it's a side yard to height ratio. Uh, we're meaning that, that's how we determine our side yard to height ratio also.
Okay, and where are you measuring to get to twenty-eight feet that's in the application?
That's, it's probably from the grade adjacent to the building, to the peak.
That, that raised grade.
That, the, right, right.
Okay. And that's the official grade, Mr. Uh, Mr. Bridger?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but, any other questions? Okay, um, before we go into executive session or open this to the public. Uh, Mr. Schatzman, is there anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, uh, Claudia, I'm gonna open the public portion of the meeting. Claudia, do we have anybody who's raised their hand? Eve, Claudia?
No hands at this time, there are no hands.
Okay, all right, so uh, hearing none. We'll continue on, if by chance we do have someone, we'll open it up again. Um, before we go into executive session, Mr. Schatzman, do you want to say anything else for the third time?
They redundant, I mean, it's, it's what I, I would call as an attorney in land use. Uh, really a technical type variance, I mean, it's there. I mean, what we're doing is topping off what's already there, and because of the two-foot overhang is described by Mr. Brackle. It really goes a little bit two feet closer to the rear yard. But all the other bulks uh, set forth in sheet two of the. Uh, uh, maps that were submitted or uh. Are met, including the F A R's not over it. D variance. So I mean, that's, that's what it is.
Okay, all right, um, let's go into executive session, do any of the board members. Uh, have anything they want to discuss relative to this case, if there are none, if someone would like to make a motion one way or the other? First, let's see if there are any, any comments to discuss.
I have um, one comment, so I gather the, what's being proposed. Actually is a, is more of a setback than the existing building right now.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I'm reading it right, all right?
Okay, um, anyone else? Okay, if no one else would like to discuss anything, if someone would like to make a motion?
I will. I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Okay.
I'll second it, Eve Colson.
Okay, thank you, Eve. Claudia, would you like to call the roll?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes. Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much for your time, appreciate it.
Enjoy the edition.
We're done.
Thank you.
Okay, our next hearing is twenty-two Edge Hill Street. Excuse me? My next hearing is twenty-two Edge Hill Street, case number Z twenty-one dash oh eighty-one. Block thirty-six oh one, lot ten in the R one zone. Um. Karen, is everything in order?
It is, yes, the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay, Derek, would you like to summarize your memo?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, Anthony Klockenbrink is the owner applicant in, of twenty-two Edge Hill, it's located in the R one zone in the former Princeton Borough. I mean, seeking relief from a condition of approval from a previous resolution preventing the establishment of a secondary resident. Accessory dwelling unit on the property. The existing single-family use is permitted as a right, subject lot is not complying with respect to the. Lot area requirement of twenty thousand square feet, the existing lot area is eleven thousand four hundred and forty-seven. It's not complying with regard to the required one hundred and twenty-five foot lot width, the existing is fifty-five feet. And then the subject property itself is not complying with respect to the required ten-foot side yard setback, the existing's six point five. The combined side yard setback requirement is twenty, existing's thirteen point seven two, the accessory. Uh, structure setback to requirements five, the existing is two feet on the side, um, the floor area ratio. Um, requirement is thirty-five point seven, seven percent, and the existing's forty-four point six. And impervious coverage ratio requirement's thirty-six percent, and the existing fifty, or the existing is fifty-two percent. And impervious coverage ratio requirements thirty six percent in the existing fifty or the existing is fifty two percent. The applicant received a variance in two thousand fourteen, case number seven thirty eight, to permit the construction of an eight hundred and thirty square foot, one story addition to the main house, an exception to the required side yard setback and lot coverage requirements. The site contains a single family house and approximately a twenty five hundred square foot, two story structure at the back of the lot. The applicant stated that the outbuilding was used as his home office and would not be converted into a second dwelling unit in the first future, excuse me. And a condition was applied to the resolution as follows. The accessory structure on the rear of the subject lot shall not be converted into a second dwelling unit. To be noted that the subject property did not have the required lot area at the time of this hearing to permit a secondary dwelling unit. The zoning at the time of the approval required a lot that was at least twenty five percent greater than the minimum lot area, or in this case, a lot of twenty five thousand square feet. The applicant is now seeking relief from the condition prohibiting an additional residential unit in order to permit an accessory dwelling unit in the structure. The town revised the secondary residence ordinance in twenty twenty, and it's been renamed an accessory dwelling unit. The ordinance now permits accessory dwelling units on nonconforming lots. The max size is eight hundred square feet or twenty five percent of the floor area of the house, whichever is greater. The proposed ADU is five hundred and thirty square feet and contains one habitable bedroom and and as such, no parking is required. ADUs only require parking when there are two bedrooms or more than two bedrooms are two habitable rooms. Although the preexisting structure does not comply with the required five foot setback, the ADU itself does comply with the setback and the ADU as presented complies with current zoning. The board has requested to consider removing this condition prohibiting the additional residential units so the applicant may establish an accessory dwelling. That's my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to.
I do. I do, Derek. What you're saying is the the one bedroom or the one room accessory dwelling unit conforms with the setback because it's interior to the building?
It's there's a garage bay on one side and a
stair on the other.
And a stair on the other. So it's it's in excess inside the five foot setback.
So it's so it's basically the the unit itself complies, whereas the structure it's in doesn't.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
And I just I just want to say, because I still find it a little confusing. There are two. There's the piece that is attached to the house that is has been considered and was an addition. And then there's also the structure that's behind the house.
Yes.
And we're talking about approving.
Building that is behind the house. It's a twenty five hundred plus or minus square foot, two story. There's a picture in the application.
Yeah.
It's labeled barn as viewed from house. So it's that first floor area between on the right side, there's a garage, a door of some sort of double hung door. And then the left side, it's like an open space. So it is that space in the that's great, Tony. Good job. So there you go.
Okay. Okay. All right, who is is the owner representing himself?
Or is Yes, I am.
I can't hear you.
I'm unmuted. Can you not?
Yeah, I can hear. I can hear you now.
I guess we can't see because of the screen sharing or?
I can.
I can see. I think it depends on which slice you have, because I can. He's right above me in my in my.
Okay. All right.
Side by side.
If I stop the share, I can do that.
That's okay. Mr. Klockenbrink, we just have to swear you and you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Klocken.
Klockenbrink.
Right, Klockenbrink. I'm very sorry. You owned the house in two thousand four, is that correct?
Yeah.
When this was approved. Because I was the I was the lone member of the board to vote against it. And I think my objection at the time had to do with closing off the backyard from basically closing off the driveway from what was indicated on the plan was a garage. The barn had a garage to it. And I think that was my objection. I can't. There is no transcript of this. And do you do you happen to remember?
Well, I don't recall that point, but you know, it's an old house. The house is eighteen sixty five. The barn is somewhere around nineteen hundred. There used to be two other structures in this backyard evidently. There's some some documentation in in the town. And there was a driveway that went all the way down this right hand side of the lot. And actually, it exited out the back as well. So into what is now the tenant Roberts campus. There's an alleyway, and so that was a functional garage. Now it's more a COVID open door space.
Yeah, I had looked at that house in the nineties, I believe, and and it had a it had that. It had the driveway. At the time, it didn't have the piece of land. There was no land behind it other than that small strip. But it did have the driveway in it going back to the barn. Okay, all right. That was just a comment. Please continue.
Yeah, so I just I can just provide a little bit more information. I put everything in a just a PowerPoint here. So as Derek mentioned, we're seeking to remove a condition on the property based on the accessory dwelling ordinance that passed last year. As Derek pointed out, it's five hundred and thirty square feet and the ordinance allows for, I believe, eight hundred square feet. Just just to show you where the property sits on Edge Hill Street. It's a very unusual property, and you'll see in the next drawing, but here, lot number thirteen is the barracks, and they have an accessory dwelling in the back, but it's a much bigger lot. The barn carriage house, whatever you want to call it, at twenty two Edge Hill goes to complete width of the property. So it's it's a fifty five foot across property. The barn is fifty five feet across. So the only access is either through the garage or through kind of the the breezeway. The this gives you just a view. If you look at this side, where the the lot sits relative to this lot of Sam Hamel. This is a seminary owned duplex on the side. They have rear buildings in the back. You see our primary house that was extended in this shaded area in the two thousand and four timeframe. And then the the subject barn. And there's actually a a backlot behind here. We are. It's we raised three kids here. They've all moved along. Kathy and I would like to remain in the property and are seeking to have the flexibility to run out a little apartment here. As Derek mentioned, there's no parking being provided. So our vision is either a a seminary graduate student or a Princeton University graduate student. And we do just having an outbuilding, we get requests all the time whether or not we could rent that space. So that's what we ideally would like to do. There is the picture of the the property. So this is a garage. This is a breezeway stairwell that leads into the back. There is a small backyard behind the house. And as far as the floor plan for the house itself, this is how it's laid out. We're not. This is existing. So the garage does go front to back, and there's a utility room where the furnace and that goes. These are completely sealed off from what would be effectively the apartment. There's egress here into the stairwell, large door. And it's just one bedroom currently half bath. It we did. This was a professional darkroom before we changed that just into a kitchenette. And we are not changing anything on the outside of the building. What we'd like to do is put in a half shower. So to make it a run a runnable space. So that is the basically summary. I'm happy to answer any questions. We appreciate the support of the zoning team to just help us get all this documentation pulled together.
Is this the second floor or first floor?
That's the ground floor.
And so where does the stairwell go?
It goes up to a second floor. We have I we have a big playroom up here. In fact, that's where I'm broadcasting from right now. And and then we just have a a room that I used to use as a home office. I'm in the process of retiring, and it currently has an exercise by supplement.
That was the question I had too. Thank you, Stephen.
So the logical question is, are you going to come back in a couple more years and say you want to build a couple more bedrooms up there?
No, no. No, and I feel free to put a condition on that. It's no way.
So sir, the only you're looking to just use the bedroom and the kitchen and the bathroom as
as a rental space.
As the rental space. And there is no vehicular access to that building?
What the there is, so the only vehicular access easiest shown here is there is a driveway. Our neighbor's driveway runs right along the whole our whole property line back to their garage here. So for in the in the past, if when we did the construction, that's how they accessed the the property. And if there were ever a fire or anything like that, that would be accessed via this driveway here.
Well, you can't. You can't. There's no easement, so you can't guarantee that access will be available. But there is a gate, a fence and a gate at the end of your driveway that leads to the backyard.
Correct.
And then below the stair, that's open to the back lot, you call it.
Correct.
So there is. There is in a sense, fire department access. Are there any buildings in the on the seminary property behind this that would preclude some sort of emergency access to that back lot?
Right in the back lot here, right now it's paved. So there's a driveway. There's a Stedman house that sits probably thirty feet behind this. Well, there's a little no man's land in between. Then there's a small garage and a Stedman house. But with the proposed redevelopment of tenant Roberts, I don't know what what that might look like going forward.
No, we can't depend on that either. But there is access through the gate on the side of your existing home, and there is access beneath the stair to get into that back lot.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Klockenbrink, we'll just make all all these depictions you've just provided. We'll call that all Exhibit A one. That's your entire PowerPoint, correct?
Okay, yeah. And I can sum that on too.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Klockenbrink. Any other? Do you want to say anything else? Or do you have anyone else who would like to speak?
No, no, it's myself here. My wife is at book club, so it's I'll carry the load. I'll carry the load here. It's, yeah, I I do think it would be great for a graduate student. There's a demonstrated need for affordable housing. And we've hosted in our main house US rowers in the past for extended periods of time. And yeah, we we would look forward to running it to the right student.
And sir, if someone wanted to park, they would just park on Edge Hill Street and then walk through your lot.
They would probably, yeah, to get, you know, for groceries and things like that. That's what they would do on an exception basis. They can park overnight, but there's only two hour parking on Edge Hill Street. Any candidates would likely be a seminary student. There's parking over behind the library, or if they're a Princeton graduate student over at their graduate school. So it's, you know, that that's a downside to the apartment. There's no consistent parking. They could rent a space behind Morven or something like that as well.
There's no parking on the street between two AM and six AM.
It on an exception basis, you can, you know, if you have visitors and that, you can ask the police department.
Oh, you can ask for it, but it's not every night.
No, 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 no.
No. Yeah, every once in a while, the police department will allow you to do that. Yeah. Yeah.
So not not ideal if if you're very car centric. But again, that's why we think more for for a graduate student.
Okay, would you any any other board members have any question of the applicant? Okay. Mr. Klockenbrink, I'm going to open this up to the public. Okay. Eve, Claudia, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
There's no one.
No one. Okay. All right. Okay, so hearing no comment. We'll close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Klockenbrink, before we go into executive session, do you want to say anything else?
No, I appreciate everyone's attention and cross my fingers that things go through.
Okay, thank you. All right, so board members, is there any discussion on this application? Okay, all right. Well, I can tell you I voted against it in two thousand four, and times have changed. And I think this, even though I can hardly remember why I did vote against it, I think it had to do with the with the parking and the driveway. We now have an ADU ordinance that permits this, and I think it's a good idea. And and I would support this application. If someone would like to make a motion one way or the other, I would appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, George.
No, it was me. It's Jim Davich.
George Stein, I'll second.
Oh, okay. All right, good. Any discussion? Is there any conditions on the motion? I should have asked that in the other applications. I think the only the only discussion we had is, I think, your comments, Stephen. Adding something else above it, but I don't think that's it's not permitted. So so are there any conditions that anybody would like?
It's not permitted. That's that's right. It would not be permitted in any case.
To add a second ADU above it.
Or to expand it. Do we do we worry about that? You know?
I'm sorry.
Derek, could they expand it without additional approval?
Just, you know, make it a
I mean, the way it's set up now, I mean, it has the kitchen dining area, which is not a habitable room. It has the one bedroom, which is a habitable room. It's five hundred and thirty square feet. They can expand it to more than two habitable rooms. I guess possibly they could add a a bedroom somewhere. But they're limited by eight hundred square feet floor area limitation of the size of the ADU. And if they add more than two units, they would need to come back. I mean, two rooms, excuse me, two habitable rooms. They would need to come back to the board for a parking variance.
Parking parking, in my opinion, would be difficult since there's only a single driveway. And it would be a difficult situation, but not impossible. Okay. Board members? Oh, we had a we have a a motion and a second. And no other conditions to it. So Claudia, would you like to call the roll?
Ms. Colson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Oh, I'm sorry. I voted before. Yes. I was so excited. I couldn't. Okay.
Thank you. It's approved.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a nice evening.
And you too. And you too.
Good luck.
Okay, our last hearing of the evening is three thirty eight Nassau Street. Hang on one sec. Let me get the it's case. it's uh case number Z twenty-one dash oh eighty-seven, block thirty-four point oh one, lot thirty-two. Um, uh, Karen, is everything in order?
It is. I I will note um for benefit of the secretary that when we get to public comment, I'm advised that we do have a neighbor uh who has an attorney present tonight who will want to comment. So we'll want to make sure we find them and um admit them to the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Derek, would you like to summarize your memo?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Three thirty-eight Nassau Street LLC is the owner and applicant of three thirty-eight Nassau Street. It's located in the RO zone, which is the residential office zone. It's also in the Jugtown Historic District. And they are seeking a modification of an approved site plan with variances to relocate air conditioners and install a generator radar and trash enclosure and exception to ordinance requirements. It is in a historic preservation district. Uh, the chair and the historic preservation officer looked at, and they didn't have any objections to the proposed changes. Um, the applicant received site plan and conditional use authorization from the zoning board in two thousand eighteen to permit the construction of a three thousand eight hundred eighty square foot addition to an existing building. The total square foot of the joint actually building is approximately fifty-seven hundred square feet. Building contains office space and two apartments. Site improvements include a thirteen space parking lot, landscaping, sidewalks, air conditionings. The existing lot contains ten thousand five hundred square feet, subjects loaded, located on the north side of Nassau Street, approximately sixty-five feet west of Harrison Street. Properties bounded in northeast and south by commercial properties and to the west by residential potential properties. The proposed site plan, the applicant is proposing to replace the existing three air conditioning condensers located on the western elevation of the building with two new air conditioning condensers and a chiller. The existing units complied with the setback, but the new units require variance relief from the required side yard setback. The all applicant is also proposing to install a generator at the rear of the trash enclosure area and exception to the required setback. Excuse me, the um applicant is requesting a recap modification of the site plan to relocate two of the three approved air conditioners located on the west side and a chiller of the building and moving them away from the building into the side yard setback. Third air conditioner is removed and a chiller will be added. The uh final mod modification request is to install a generator in the trash enclosure located at the northwest corner of the property. The zoning officer myself cited the incorrect section for permitting the trash enclosure to be located where it should where it is, and it should have required a variance as there's there is no accessory setback in this district. The sections I cited was for residential accessory structure. So the following variances are required. Uh, the two air conditioning side yard setbacks requirements tend the proposed are eight point eight feet. The uh the chiller, the setback again is is required ten feet and the proposed is three point seven feet. The trash enclosure is subject to the rear yard setback of twenty-five feet. The proposed is fourteen point one five feet and a generator. It's also uh subject to that rear yard setback. The proposed requirement is twenty-five feet. Are the required is twenty-five and the proposed is three. That's basically a synopsis of the request. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
So everything, everything is back in the far corner of the parking lot.
Well, that's where the generator and the trash enclosure are on that far corner. It's bordered on the one side by an office building and a parking lot. Behind it is the Merrill Lynch Office Building. And the the air conditioners will be put on the western elevation of the property, which does border a uh residential house.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, I assume you're representing the applicant.
That's right, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um, also tonight I see um our our engineer, Jim Kamalek, is on. If we could also uh bring on William King, uh, he's in the attendees and and I also just because we've been texting all night just to make sure that he could get on. I do see Bill Potter. He's an attorney for the neighbor. Uh, I think he'd be more comfortable if you could put him on now. I know I just want to make sure that he was, you know, able to to get on. Uh, there were some
Well, I'd I'd rather, I think, I think maybe, I mean, I have no objection if anybody else doesn't, but I think we'd want to hear the the presentation first before we put on the objectors.
Of course, I just want it just to acknowledge that we you can see him know that that he's there. There was a question before that, uh, whether he made it on.
Okay.
All right. Um, with that, we'll we'll have uh two witnesses tonight, our our engineer and the principal for the property owner. Perhaps we just swear them both in uh quickly, um, and we can get on with our testimony.
All righty, so, uh, Mr. Chimalak. Yeah, I see you and I see Mr. King. Do you both swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And and Ms. Casey, as we normally do, we've cut up uh the uh plans into a few slides just to make it a little quicker. I guess we can mark the whole thing as uh A1.
That's fine.
Okay, we we will accept Mr. Kowchik as an expert witness.
Oh, I appreciate that as well.
No problem.
Okay, so, uh, as Mr. Bridger noted, um, uh, correctly, this is a an existing, almost completed project at three thirty-eight Nassau. Uh, Bill King, the the principal for the owner, has uh spent a lot of time, two years ago, several of you were on the board then when this was approved, uh, working with HPC, working with this board uh to to create a plan to kind of restore and reuse uh building that he purchased from the Graves estate. Um, it just from driving by, you could probably see how much of that has been completed. As often happens during construction, the engineering is finalized, uh, and the specifications, uh, you know, for the equipment that they need come together. Um, and uh, some changes to the uh HVAC equipment were required uh for what the building needed. Uh, and then they decided it would be a good time to also put in a generator as well. Uh, as as Mr. Bridger said before, the trash enclosure, while it does need a new variance, is really depicted in the same location. This is kind of a technical item, uh, you know, that I think everybody missed uh in two thousand eighteen, and we're here to kind of clean that up, but not really change where that is. Uh, you'll hear that um, you know, those items, I think, as as Chairman Cohen, you've noted, are kind of in a uh utility corridor backing, um, you know, in a common area where the other buildings uh behind uh, you know, have their generators and trash enclosures clustered, the just to keep them out of the way from from everyone. Uh, those are also the furthest away from the residential properties that you see to the left. Um, and I'm gonna invite uh Mr. King to speak in in a second here, uh, just to go through really what where they are with construction. Un- unfortunately, uh, you can only go so far in a building without HVAC. Um, I know they're actually waiting to be able to finish mudding and taping, uh, you know, you need HVAC to kind of you know, bring the humidity down and install the floors, unfortunately. Um, they've spent a lot of time. Uh, you know, it was more than two years ago. Uh, they've been working ever since to restore this uh this building. Um, and I'm really, really proud of the work that they've uh they've done. So with that, I'm gonna put up our exhibit and um and invite Mr. King to to speak for a few minutes about where they are with this project and uh what they've done with the property.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board members. Appreciate the opportunity to address you. We are behind schedule on this project, um largely because, and we are significantly over budget. Uh, we're by behind schedule about um almost nine months now. And we're over budget by about a million dollars, and almost all that is attributable to the work that was required for the existing component of the building that fronts on Nassau Street. Um, as we got into the project, we found that there was extensive wood rot in the building. Uh, that it that wood rot extended uh from the structure uh starting at the sill plates and also a shifted stone foundation. So we had to take the foundation apart and reassemble it. We had to uh lift the the building, actually portions of the building at a time, and replace all the sill plates and many of the studs that run down to the sill plates that had rotted on the bottom. We sistered new pieces to the old pieces. We also found out that the siding on the building was extensively rotted, and some of it had been replaced by Michael Graves. Uh, but it was the not the correct dimension. So we ended up buying new Western hemlock siding at a dimension that's larger than what we needed. I'm just giving you an example. In order to have the correct shadow line horizontally under the clabber. Uh, so we're using ten inch Western red cedar instead of uh the 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 normal six inch or seven, I'm sorry, eight inch um siding in order to have that thicker butt se- section in order to show that shadow line. Um, we also found out when we got into the chimneys that the chimneys had uh disintegrated, a big portion of the chimneys had disintegrated. So we had to to take out those portions of the brick and build new brick. So it's been an extensive project. Um, and I'm not sure I would undertake it again. I I I I didn't find any of the buildings at Carnegie Center nor the master plan out there to be daunting, but this project has been a daunting project. Um, but but at any rate, we appreciate all your help and all your cooperation. And we hope to um be able to address all the concerns uh related to the items that Mr. Bridger brought up.
Uh, thank you, Bill. Um, with that, I'm gonna uh share my screen. Uh, Mr. King will be available. Of course, uh, there are questions, but I think the, you know, this is a site plan amendment and uh be good to uh get to our um engineer to go through that. Jim, uh, but again, Mr. Cohen, I appreciate you uh accepting his credentials. Jim does speak here often. We'll just move through here, uh, let Jim um in uh orient us to to the site. I know it's a pretty familiar place in town and and some of you heard this application, but Jim, you could just talk us through the neighborhood here.
Sure, um, the subject property, three thirty-eight Nassau is located on the northwest corner at the intersection of Harrison and Nassau. It's the second building in the yellow building. Um, as most of you are familiar with it, it's the former Graves building. It is uh entirely developed, pre-existing developed lot um with the existing front portion of the building that uh is remaining, and there was a an additional addition off the rear uh which is being reconstructed as part of this project, as part of the previous approval. And that also included uh within the Jugtown District and something that uh the board had a strong desire for was reinstating uh the two uh dwelling units within this building which previously existed and then uh were taken out for a period of time for a purely commercial use. And then this project helps to reinstate that joint mixed-use uh orientation here in this local neighborhood, which was identified as a need pursuant to the prior approval. So we, you can see here, this is the the Jugtown Historic District. We went through uh historic preservation as part of the prior approval. It's the second lot in here. Uh, it abuts the corner lot, uh, which the applicant uh also owns. And to the rear is the Merrill Lynch uh commercial building. Uh, as you can see here in that reddish color to the rear of three thirty-eight Nassau. And then abutting the property to the west or to the left of the site, we have the rear property lines of um two residential uh properties that front on Evelyn Place. Uh, this this slide gives you an overall view of the existing building in gray located in the 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 front yard or right-hand portion of the property. Uh, the new addition in orange, and then again, this previously existing driveway and gravel parking lot up the um easterly side or the top of the page to the rear. And then uh in two locations here in the upper left-hand corner uh of the property, which is the rear corner where the trash enclosure area, uh, trash can area with a a wood enclosure was proposed previously and approved by the board. Um, the applicant is seeking to put in an emergency generator to support uh the proposed building in that corner. Uh, and the idea here was, you know, it's a um less utilized area of the site. Obviously, the site is almost completely developed edge to edge. That's the reason for uh the other variances pursuant to the pre-existing conditions. Uh, and in this area, uh, you can see to the left of the property line, we have several other air conditioning units that service um the Merrill Lynch Office Building there off to the left with the first floor there and the perimeter of that property primarily a parking lot with covered parking over in that corner. And then down on the westerly boundary or the bottom of the page, you can see the proposed uh air conditioning chiller unit and two supplemental condensers. The two condensers are AC condensers for the one-bedroom efficiency units in the new addition at the rear. And the AC chiller unit uh has been specified pursuant to the final design, which is subsequent to the approval that the applicant received from this board uh to suit the needs of the building and the the energy programming that they've uh included as part of the mechanical uh design for the building and the HVAC system. So you can see that we have um the site plan here that was submitted to you. And again, this is uh largely and almost entirely with the exception of the couple elements that we're uh discussing here tonight and focusing, you know, the same in terms of overall layout, setbacks, uh extent of parking areas, things like that. And we're highlighting here, uh, again, in the rear corner, we have the trash enclosure area, which is uh pushed a little closer to um towards the building and then the tr- the generator is tucked in the back. We just thought that was within that same enclosure, a logical space, you know, out of the way in that location. Um, down along the side property line, which Mr. Kennedy is highlighting there, we have the proposed chiller unit. And that's located in the vicinity of where the three AC condensers uh were located within that notch uh adjacent to the building, which at the time of the approval did comply with the setback, but based on um the the footprint of this specified uh piece of equipment uh and also the necessary clearance and spacing around the unit. Um, this is the location where the unit would fit here within the side yard. Um, and again, as you can see with the site heavily developed um with a, you know, significant amount of visual frontage uh along the the front yard as well as up the driveway side yard from an aesthetic standpoint. This is where the applicant is is proposing to, you know, keep those condensers located in the same general areas previously approved uh but with a slightly, you know, larger sized unit to fit their use. And in particular, that unit is in terms of dimensions, five and a half, approximately five and a half feet long, five and a half feet high and about three and a half feet wide. So those are the approximate dimensions. Um, I should highlight that along the side yard property line near the chiller, uh, our plan had previously included a solid wood fence uh for screening purposes. We are replacing the existing wood picket fence with a s- s- six-foot-high solid privacy fence to increase the the screening and provide some buffering uh from the side yard area to the rear property line of the adjacent residential property.
And still, but still wood.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, but but solid to provide that privacy. And then on the other side, in the same location uh of that privacy fence, you can see the existing stone driveway which is along its rear property line and has access from Nassau Street into the property along with access to the existing garage, which is at the very bottom of your screen. So the vicinity of the area that we're discussing here tonight relative to the AC chiller unit, you know, abuts uh the property line. And the applicant is seeking a a variance for that side yard setback with the six-foot-high fence uh that abuts that existing driveway and is in the vicinity, or at least the unit is within approximately thirty feet of the the outer edge of that uh garage structure.
Jim, just so I understand the reading the the plans correctly here. Um, the existing building, um, now, of course, this is all existing at this point because it was approved and mostly built. But the original kind of historic front building, um, the setback to that, is that closer to the property line than these AC units and the chiller will be?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so these are not as as close to the property line as the building there is. Okay, so these are not as, as close to the property line as the building there is.
Right, they're not, they're not exacerbating that, that existing setback condition. They're further away from the property line than the building. Has been for many, many years.
And you said that fence will be a six-foot fence? Is that what the plan said?
Yes. And again, that was previously proposed and is still will, will wrap around and tie into the corner of the existing building. Providing visual screening from both the adjacent property as well as the Nassau Street corridor. Additionally, we should mention that. The emergency generator. Will include a sound attenuating enclosure. And will be located within an enclosed fence for visual screening purposes. And the AC chiller unit in the side yard that we have been discussing. The owner did select out of various options. There is an option with this carrier unit for an ultra-low sound option. That has internal sound dampening within the, within the unit. And that is included as part of the equipment that was specified.
Those are the two small units adjacent to the, the building?
No, those two smaller units are just. They would be for one for each of the one-bedroom apartments in the addition.
No, I understand that. So what you're referring to is the. Sound attenuation where the lower is for the big, the big unit, five foot, five foot.
They did select that option out of, you know, what was available from an attenuating standpoint within that, for that equipment.
Do you know what the, do you know what the noise level would be from that unit at the property line?
We, we haven't calculated exactly at the property line, but the carrier representative did a sound. Propagation calculation from this particular unit. And they indicated that at a distance of thirty feet from the unit. At a hundred percent maximum load, that the decibel level would be fifty-eight decibels.
Without the fence being considered.
And that's without the fence or any, you know, in intervening equipment or obstructions. But just to give you some general reference. That thirty-foot distance basically takes you, covers the driveway area. And reaches the edge, the closest edge of the existing garage. So from a, you know, from a, from a noise propagation standpoint or a level of concern, at least from, from our end or the applicant's. You know, and taking a look at what the, the sensitive receiver would be. We don't have, you know, a residential dwelling that's located immediately to the property line again. You know, within this thirty feet, you have an existing driveway and then. The existing garage and the dwelling is. Upwards and slightly over eighty feet away from this location, you know, further towards the front because the residence fronts on Evelyn Place and this is the rear property line here.
Good. So how far is it from that? Side yard of your property to the back of the house, eighty feet?
I approximately seventy-five, I would say, because from the unit to the back of the house, it's eighty.
Got you. Okay.
All right, so we took that to mention.
Okay, thank you.
And Jim, the two smaller units are more of a standard residential type, the type perhaps that.
Yes.
Under, under the neighborhood character ordinance would, would be three foot from a property line if this were a single-family home.
Correct. Yeah, they're, they're a typical smaller unit. They are specified, you know, on the plan and. You know, smaller footprint and, and they're greater than eight feet from the property line, so they're not as close. Again, they're, they need to be at least a foot and a half off the building. So that's the reason for where the applicant has located them within the side yard.
It's pretty much, it's a split system heat pump system, I assume, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, yeah, those are generally, that's, that's a residential type unit.
And I think in general, just to give the board a little bit of background in terms of the design of the system of the AC chiller unit. As it's been explained to me, the applicant. Really looked at overall operational costs, you know, over the long haul for the type of system that they wanted to install and identified that. You know, for this particular building, based upon the occupants and the intended use. That in general, it's going to be a relatively low occupancy building in terms of the tenants that they have and the. The residency of. The users within the building actually occupying and being there at any one time. So I think there was a concern for. Heating and cooling the entirety of this building for twenty-four-seven. Throughout the, you know, years and years of the operational period. And what they did is they, as I understand it, split. The various zones leading from this piece of equipment into thirty-six individual. Zones within the building that can be independently controlled. With, with a variable speed type of system within that chiller unit, so that basically it can be. Dialed back and dialed up only when needed. The, this is applicable to the office use of the building, so really during the daytime hours when there is occupancy. That would be the main use and demand, but in the evening, certainly, the intention is that that unit would be. Low operation, even if it's operating at all, in addition to that as well on the weekend, so. Those two residential units have sort of that standard condensers that would take care of them twenty-four-seven, so I think. In terms of context and the, the reason why the piece of equipment was selected and the energy conservation and the. The operational cost over time. I think the anticipation here is that this unit will not be. Operating continuously at max load. You know, for the, for the entirety of its, its operational need.
Okay.
So in terms of the variances. As Mr. Bridger said previously, the trash and recycling area. We did, I think, last time get that side yard variance of one foot where ten feet is required, but. Just based upon the administrative nature of. All things and all structures having to comply with the principal building setback, which is twenty-five feet off the rear property line. Fourteen point one is proposed in this case. For the trash area and then for the generator. A side yard and rear yard setback of three feet is proposed again, where the principal building setback. Of ten and twenty-five feet are required respectively. And the AC condensers, as we discussed, for the residential component, the side yard at eight point eight feet. Where ten feet is required due to that required setback from the building. And the chiller unit at three point seven feet from the property line where ten feet is required. And again, that was driven by. The, the required clear distances around that particular unit. Which drove the need for that, that side yard setback. And we just note here at the bottom that the enclosure for the, the enclosure fence. For the generator as well as a trash area, just based upon the constraints, they're located on the property line. And it's basically a non-combustible. Fence-type material.
What is, it's wood, right?
No, it's, it's an aluminum. It would be a, an architectural painted aluminum. Fence that's non-combustible. I believe it's a Class A specification in and around the. Generator unit. As manufactured by Nexan, that's, that's a, like a typical provider of a fence. Like that, so we wanted to have a. A non-combustible material as opposed to a, a standard wood, but still architecturally, you know, sensitive and. And treated and painted to fit in with the character of the property.
Aluminum, aluminum, okay. How, how long is that fence? That goes all along the property line?
No, this, this particular fence would be for the enclosure area. The, in the rear corner.
Oh, you're talking about the, on the other side, the generator, yeah, okay.
Just for the generator.
Not the, yeah, that's fine. I, I see that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. We just felt that that treatment, you know, certainly is more appropriate in that back area.
That's fine. Okay, but around the, around the AC chiller unit, that's just depends on the property line.
Right, that would be a board-on-board solid wood fence that was previously proposed as part of the original approval.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So. I think in terms of. The what the applicant, the applicant is asking for, you know, we covered. And, and also the why with these particular units as well and the reason why they're in the side yard setback. We provided some sound information that we, we were given by the, by the manufacturer. Noting that this is along the rear property line at the periphery and not affecting. You know, directly in close proximity to occupancy of a residential dwelling. So from that standpoint, in terms of. The overall approval, this is an amended site plan approval with variances. We would still see these particular variances in terms of setback. To still follow our arguments from the prior approval in terms of. In light of the C-two criteria. Of special reasons to encourage municipal action to guide appropriate use or development of lands in the state. In a manner that would promote general welfare and in particular, you know, we see. We see this project still as supporting. The general welfare due to the historic restoration elements as part of it, which. Mr. King spoke to as well as the.
Your sound, can anybody else hear Mr. Kamelcheck?
Yes, I can hear him.
Yes, yes. Are we good?
Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry about that. So purpose A, to promote the general welfare in support of. The historic restoration of the building and the investment to promote. The continuing use and occupation of this structure. As well as the need of additional dwelling units within the Jug Town area that was previously identified to restore those two residential units. We feel that J would be supported to promote the conservation of historic sites and districts. And then ultimately, at the end of this project, the overall package would support I to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques. Good civic design arrangements. We still feel that this mixed-use development. Would support elevating the aesthetics of the property, you know, beyond the. Some, some of the disrepair over the years of the previously existing building and, and the new addition at the rear. There's no further disturbance or impingement of the. Variance for the, the access passageway to the residential dwellings, the variance that was previously. Granted for access to residential dwellings, a minimum ten-foot-wide passageway from the frontage. That was discussed, really not affecting any of that in this particular case. And, and we should mention just in terms of the, the overall. Context of the, the property relative to. The hardship constraints that the applicant is operating within. You can see that the pre-existing limits of the footprint and the development. Really extends to, close to the periphery property lines on all sides. So the applicant is, you know, extremely limited in terms of. The ability to have multiple opportunities to locate this equipment, so. We're curious to, you know, to hear the board's feeling on this. We hope that it's certainly, you know, supported. There's a real need to. To include this as part of the final design and certainly can answer any questions.
Board members, any questions? Okay. Actually, I, I have, I want to reserve my questions till after we hear. From Mr. Potter. I have, I do have some questions. Okay, if there are. No questions of the applicant. Mr. Ryan, Mr. Kennedy, I'm sorry, do you have? Anything you want to say before we open it up to the public? Hang on there, Mr. Potter.
I, I don't, just want to thank, thank the board and also to thank staff. Again, this is a, an odd spot where something was approved previously and it kind of got stuck mid-construction and everyone's been really. Helpful in, in keeping the, the project, you know. Viable, frankly, so I just want to thank municipal staff frankly for, for. Getting us here to this point. It's usually the case that we spend years as, as often as the case with HPC. And this board planning things and ultimately sometimes things need to change. So again, just appreciative of everyone's time, especially the staff.
Okay. All right, so if. If there are no more comments or questions, we'll open this up to the public. I don't know how many people we have that are out there. But I think Mr. Potter seems to be chopping at the bit here, so. Why don't we start with you? Claudia, can you let Mr. Potter in?
I think he is in, it's just he's muted.
Oh, you're, you're, you're muted, Mr. Potter. You have to turn your sound on. No sound yet.
Okay, well, may, uh, board, if I just may say that, my apologies, one of the neighbors, that one of the neighbors is trying to get on to the Zoom meeting, so if someone can let in. Graham Lord, that would be great.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand that.
I, I believe, he, he's in now.
Okay, good, yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Am I speaking too loudly or?
No, you're good.
Louder, I'm good, okay. I have some questions for Mr. King.
You need to be sworn in, Mr. Potter.
No, 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 he's, he's appearing on behalf of, is that Julia Massack? Is that correct, Mr. Potter?
That is correct.
And she is a neighbor, right? A adjacent property owner?
Yes, I wanted to actually make that clear in the questioning.
So it's, it's questions you want to ask of the witnesses, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, great, all right.
Okay.
Mr. King, I don't see you. Are you still there on the?
Yeah, he's, he's here.
Okay. You, you testified that you have firstly. Completed construction of the three thirty-eight Nassau Street building, is that correct?
It should be finished sometime in the next few months, let's say two to three months.
Somewhere in the next two months. And you're increasing the square footage from, well, I think you said up to five thousand seven hundred square feet or. What, what is the comparison between the original building's square footage and square footage that you have? Constructed and it's, you've done a beautiful job too. It's, it's quite impressive.
Jim, can you answer that?
Sure.
Well, can Mr. King answer that?
No, I don't, I don't know precisely the answer to that.
Okay. Jim?
The existing floor area, three thousand one hundred ninety-two.
Okay, and the square footage of.
Proposed floor area, five thousand six hundred ninety-one.
Okay, that's an increase of. About forty percent, I guess. No? Okay. And I think, Mr. King, you testified that you're nine million dollars over budget?
No, I said one million dollars.
One million dollars. This is not a hardship variance, is it? Is it not? It's not a hardship variance. Is that correct?
Ryan, you'll have to answer that. I don't know what it is.
We, we applied on our C-one and, and C-two. This is a, a existing, as you heard the testimony from Mr. Kamalik. This is a site that's constrained by an existing historic building, so we felt that. The original approval was a C-one and C-two for the similar variances.
Both variances, C-one variances, correct?
I'm pretty sure I just said C-one and C-two.
And C-two.
Correct. This, I'm, I'm, this is from the, this is from the approval, these, the, the project was approved in two thousand eight. This is a Z eighteen eighteen dash five six six is the approvals for the, for this project.
It was approved in twenty eighteen, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just three years ago, right? Mr. King, I'm, I'm curious. It appears that you have proceeded to build. The building out to its five thousand, et cetera. the building out to its five thousand et cetera square foot feet. On the assumption that you could get a variance for moving the generator, moving the chiller, moving the trash pump containers. If you wanted to or needed to, is that correct?
We proceeded to build the building based on what I thought we had for the chiller location. And the engineer advised me, and most recently that that it's not just the size of the chiller, it's the, it's the room around it, which Mr. Kamalik testified to. It's necessary for it to be clear space. And that's moved it into an encroachment into the side yard, which is the request for the variance.
Oh, that movement, that revised location puts it right next door to three Evelyn Place, is that correct?
I don't, I don't know the address.
You don't know the address?
Of the house. I don't know the address of the house.
Well, under what other nomenclature do you know of that house?
Mr. Lord's property.
Mr. Lord's property and Mrs. Massnak's property, is that correct?
I believe she touches the back corner of our property.
Which is the back corner? Well, we'll clear that up later. The chiller, I'm I'm quite curious about that. What is the difference between a chiller and an air conditioning unit? Is it the same thing?
Yes, general, generally speaking.
Okay. Now, this is, I think you proposed the Carrier Aqua Snap three oh, three oh, right? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, and that's, how high is that? Does that sit?
I think Mr. Kamalik testified the height.
Well, Mr. Kamalik, what was the height of this air conditioning, chiller unit? Chiller air conditioning?
I believe it's sixty seven inches.
Sixty seven inches. And the height of the fence is what?
Seventy two. Seventy two.
So it will not be visible?
Correct.
Does it, do you know what is the peak noise level that is projected from a Carrier Aqua Snap thirty? I think one of the cut sheets for the for the unit was listed as eighty five decibels.
That's the sound power value. That's correct.
Okay. And we're going into global climate change, global increased heat and humidity and so forth. What makes you think that the, that this chiller, if it's present, will not be run at full power to cool the future residents of three thirty eight Nassau, our Harrison?
Well, as I mentioned, based upon the programming of the building and the internal design of the system. As per the mechanical engineer, they've designed it with various zones within the building so that it can be operated more efficiently. As opposed to full on all the time, which would be probably the other extreme. So they have the ability, as I understand it, to throttle and provide setbacks for the operation of that equipment. In order to, number one, conserve energy, which is probably a good thing. And then also save on the, you know, operational costs over time.
And who would control the chillers, the chiller?
The the owner of the building or?
Well, that's Mr. King, isn't it?
Mr. King and his group are the property owners. That's correct.
And they would be controlling the chiller at the same, over the next twenty, thirty years? Is that right?
The occupants of the building, yes.
Well, the the occupants, there will be separate meters in each dwelling unit. Is that so? Is that correct?
Meters? I'm not familiar with the details of metering within the
Oh, that makes a big difference, doesn't it? I mean, if the I've done a lot of work on energy issues and a a general permit for, I'm sorry, a general meter for an entire building of residents and so forth. What is the incentive of the individual owners to keep down the air conditioning use if they're not paying for the electricity that's consumed?
Well, Jim, I'll clarify, since you're not familiar with the meters, there are, there are separate meters for the apartments. The tenants of the apartments will be paying the cost for the the usage of the energy that runs those air conditioning units, the split systems.
Okay, good.
And then there's a separate, there's a separate meter for the balance of the building, which is the office component of the building.
And how many offices will there be?
Well, generally speaking, there'll be, right now, there are four and four, so there's eight offices.
And each one of those, there's one meter then for those eight offices. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So again, we have a problem of who's going to pay for the generator use and and that going into global climate change. We had all better get ready for for it. Let me ask you this. If you had to stick by your original approvals from twenty eighteen, could you not complete the project with the original location for the chiller?
No.
You could not complete it?
No.
Why is that?
Well, the the systems for the, for the air conditioning in the building are dependent on the use of that specific or that general sized chiller.
I understand. You cannot comply with the prior approvals if you're denied this variance tonight. Is that correct?
Right. We, we, when we applied for the approval for this project, as we normally would do for one of my buildings at Carnegie Center or any one of the commercial projects or other projects that I've built in Princeton. We typically don't have the entire building designed for concern that we would spend a lot of money to do the final engineering of the building and potentially not get approval for it. So what we did was we got an approval for what we thought was a reasonable size and location for the chiller unit for the commercial space and for the two split systems, the condensing units. And when we finally engineered the the chiller and the building and the condensing units and the split systems. It was determined that 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 particular chiller at the size that Mr. Kamalik described is the one that's necessary to operate the office component of the building.
Was it not the case that the chillers are directly opposite the residential property that is occupied by my my client? And it's supposed to be visible to the occupant and most importantly, would be the source of recipient of the noise, the detriment from the noise. And I think you you showed that there's a reduction in the setback from, because it ten feet to to one foot, is that correct?
No.
From ten foot to three, three, three.
What are you talking about?
The setback.
The generator or the trash, their trash enclosure or the
Or the
Condenser?
Chiller and the air conditioning units.
The air, the AC condensers are eight point eight feet.
Okay, from ten feet and
And the chiller was the question. I believe the chiller was
And that's three, that was three point seven feet.
Yeah, from ten feet to
If you don't mind me asking, what was that originally, the chiller location or the air, whatever you had there to start with? What was that at the time of the approval?
At the time of the approval, it was more of a standard unit located and tucked into the bump in of the footprint, which allowed it to comply with the ten foot setback.
Okay, so we're going from ten foot to what, three foot?
Three point seven, yeah, almost four feet.
So roughly four foot. Okay, thank you.
So you cannot live with that original approval?
I think I answered that question.
And you said no.
Correct.
All right. So basically, you were proceeding on the assumption that if you needed to move this chiller unit closer to my client's property line, that you would get the variance, right?
We're hopeful of that. That's what we applied for.
Okay, and hopeful. Hold on a second. And the generator, what is the size of that? How is it?
It's on the plants.
It's on the what?
It's on the plant.
Can you show it again, please?
It's on the last sheet of the plan set?
Well, I don't
Eighty, eighty kilowatts?
Eighty kilowatts?
Yes.
What is this dimensions of that generator?
Well, I mentioned that in the testimony.
Well, do you mind answering my question?
Let me just find it here for you.
Okay, thank you.
Four feet high. Four feet high. Eight feet long.
Eight feet long?
Three feet wide.
Three feet wide.
Approximately, yes.
Approximately. And would there be a fuel storage unit to to, for the oil or gasoline or whatever? Or you're using natural gas, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, let's move on. Do you agree that there would be some amount of increased noise to the adjoining residential properties from the replacement of the chiller units?
Is that directed to the engineer? May I direct that question to the, I'll direct that to Jim?
Yes, you may.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes.
So there would be some detriment to the quality of life and and the quiet enjoyment and so forth?
Is that a question or?
It's more of an observation, really.
Okay.
Some of a rhetorical question, although if you want to respond to it, you may. Okay. Now, I think you referenced a my notes are pretty skinny here, a a sound attenuating enclosure device or something for the chiller?
Yes, I did speak to the option for the chiller of the ultra low sound option for that particular unit.
Does that affect the power output of the unit? If you increase the insulating effect of the acoustical
In terms of the energy output, is that your question or I don't have an answer for that? I don't have that knowledge.
Okay, now there are air conditioning compressors as well that are those would be setback eight point eight feet rather than ten, is that correct?
Yes, similar to a residential property, they can be as close as three feet to the property line. Okay, these are eight feet, almost nine feet.
But the the real issue, I think, is the Aqua Snap thirty chiller, which my clients view as very risky to permanently affect their property values and their quality of life. What what do you say to that?
Is that a, if that's an engineering question, I'll direct it to to Jim if he has that knowledge. If he doesn't, I don't know if we have anyone prepared to
No one's prepared to answer. Okay. One of
We didn't present any value testament, we didn't present any value testimony tonight, so I don't have a
And we don't have a an opinion based upon being a sentient being?
I'd be happy to give you mine. I haven't been sworn in though, so I'll
This goes on.
I, I Thank you. Well, Dennis Udasko was unable to join us later to be a planning expert, I'm sorry to say. We had if I might comment, we had thought that we were making progress toward some kind of amicable review of this for purposes of seeing what we could do to, in the spirit of Joe Biden, come together. But as I understand it, Mr. King, you felt that was not, that was going to hold up your, your building to have a a continuance on the hearing and spend some time working this out.
I'm more than happy to take the time to work this out. I don't think there's a need to have a continuance of the hearing. There's a lot of people involved in this and I'm respectful of everybody's time, including your clients.
Well, if if it's approved, what is there to negotiate? That's, that's my problem.
I, I, I am an honorable person. I have
I'm sure you are, Mr. King, and I don't mean in any way
I don't know if you are sure or you're not, but I am an honorable person and I'll continue to work with, you know, either one of your clients or all of your clients. I don't even know how many people you represent, but but I I've made a career out of making sure that we generate goodwill with our neighbors and I'm not going to change it now. I'm late in my career and I want to make sure that that's how people remember me when I'm not here anymore. We do very high quality product, projects. And we take this, the project that you're referring to here very seriously. It was impressed upon us the importance of the historic nature of the zone and how this building plays an important part in that historic nature of the zone. And we've been very respectful of how we've treated the building and how we've paid a lot of attention to the details that were necessary to make sure that it it reflects the concerns a community has expressed to us about this building. We will continue to do the same with respect to the individuals in the community that you represent. And we'll do that as a matter of good faith. I believe we've actually already considered that some of your comments. For example, the location of the generator, we didn't put the generator beside the building. And we didn't put the generator beside the building because of its its length and it and it's, it's also its noise. It looked like that would belong more closely to a point that's at the far end of the property width. And adjacent to the mechanical plant from Mr. Barsky's building, which generates about twenty decibels greater than the generator generates. I think Mr. Kamalik may have pointed out to you that we also spent money for the generator enclosure that also mitigates the the noise generated by that unit. There was also a request to turn the exhaust pipe in a direction away from the neighbor's house. The exhaust is is exhausted internally between the generator motor itself and that sound attenuation bracket and 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 the enclosure.
Okay. Have you met with any of the Evelyn Place residents?
Mr. Lord and his wife and I spent some time looking at the plans at the very beginning of the construction. I don't even think we'd started construction yet, Graham. But we went, we went through the plans. I also put notes in everybody's mailboxes inviting them to two separate meetings. Where we would explain what it was we're proposing to do prior to the original hearings that took place for this. And in addition to those And in addition to those notes, and by the way, there were, there was a couple across the street from, I believe it's, uh, three thirty-six, maybe? They came to one of the meetings and we explained to them what we were planning on doing, and they were very supportive of, of the project. And where there are also notifications that were, that were served per law about those hearings.
Unfortunately.
What areas are you referring to? The original hearings. Hearings, as far as I'm, I'm.
The original.
The only hearings, is it not?
Well, no, there was a prior approval that was testified to earlier.
Twenty eighteen?
Yes.
Three years ago?
Yes.
Okay, but that's a separate application. This is, okay.
Well, it's related to this.
They were not received by us, I will add.
Whoa, 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 Ms. Mastic, if you're going to testify, then we have to swear you in. Are you testifying now?
She's going to testify, but.
Well, we'll, let's just swear you in since it sounds like you're making comments. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Um, are you aware of the definition of noise in the, um, the land use code, chapter B twenty-one, loud, continuous or excessive noise?
Are, are you referring to the plainly audible standard that Princeton has?
It shall be unlawful for any person to make, continue, or cause to be made or continued any loud, continuous or excessive noise or any noise which endangers the health, safety or welfare of the community or which annoys, disturbs, injures or endanger the comfort, repose, health, peace or safety of others within Princeton. Do you think you meet that standard?
I, I'll opine as a part-time municipal attorney in another town that that standard
Oh, no.
The audible standard is difficult. No, uh, uh, but, oh, Mr. King, I guess if, if you know the answer to that, perhaps. You can, if you don't, please, uh, don't answer the question.
I, I, I don't, I don't even understand the question.
The question is, are you going to meet the standard in the code? Or not? That's pretty relevant, I think. Which I just read to you. Have you ever read it before? The noise standard?
I, I've read a lot of codes. I don't know if I've read this, but I think I have. I think I recently looked at this, uh, site plan.
I would hope that you had read it before expending so much money and time and effort.
Mr. Potter, you're, you're referring to the nuisance code in, in, in the Princeton Borough and Township Ordinance, uh, consolidated ordinance, is that correct?
The B twenty-one, loud, continuous or excessive noise, I think, I think this is, well, it certainly is adopted ordinance.
B twenty-one, that would not be in the land use code, is that correct? That's, that's the.
Oh, really? So it's a nuisance code, okay. The one. Okay.
Mr. Bridger, is there a, a, a standard at the, of the noise level at the property line, maximum noise level at the property line?
Not in this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
There is a, a, a general default standard, so to speak, of fifty um, decibels.
And where is that standard?
Um, that's a good question. I'll wait for Mr., oh, we can't, Dennis Hadasco will be joining us. Where is that standard?
Yeah, we presume, though, that if it's not in Princeton's land use ordinance, that this board could not grant a variance from it, so that we're.
Well, I think they have to consider whether or not the, there's going to be detriment to, uh, surrounding properties. And if the detriment is found in the violation of another aspect of the code, of course, there's consideration has to be given to that. Would you agree, Ryan? Okay.
I'll say, I'll say no. I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't really know what you're, you didn't cite anything specific. Uh, I guess you're saying that there, if there's a detriment, they have to, if there's been testimony or evidence of a detriment, detriment, that's one of the things that the, uh, board should weigh in deciding a C variance. I, I certainly agree with it. That's the standard for C variance.
All right, um. Thank you very much, Mr. King and Mr. Jim. Thank you very much. I would like to call now, um, for the testimony of Julia Massnak, uh, who is a next-door neighbor of the project. Julia, are you joining us? Are you still there?
I'm here, if you can hear me.
I can hear you, but I don't, I can't see you.
We can both, I can see and hear her.
Hi, and thanks for, oh, it's all right for the late hour.
I can't see you.
I don't know why. Maybe you can change your view, Bill. Um, gallery view or others can see me, okay?
I can see you, I can see you and hear you.
Here she is. I see Janet, Julia. Are you, you're sworn in now. Um, Julia, where do you live?
At the three Evelyn Place. Three Evelyn Place.
Uh, and where are you employed?
Princeton University.
Uh, do you own and fee simple the property?
I own two-thirds of the property. Princeton University owns one-third of it as part of their co-tenancy program for, uh, full-time tenured faculty members.
And you're full-time tenured faculty in, uh, what department?
Uh, the Princeton Institute for International and Regional Studies and the Department of Anthropology.
Oh, thank you very much. Do you, what are your concerns with this, uh, historic structure? That is, that Mr. King has taken such pains to, uh, uh, develop and so forth. Uh, what, what concerns do you have that are, have driven you to the extreme of having to hire me as an attorney?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I'll try to keep a brief and apologize again to the board members for the hour, but since neither, um, my neighbor at one Evelyn nor I actually received the official notice that was signed by hearing, this was our first opportunity to get, um, involved at all, so, um, it's a little heavy-loaded for this issue, but there has been a complete disruption of my life since, or my family's life since this construction began. We are not at a corner. Um, my office, my home office as a writer, my husband's is directly, um, in the line of the construction site. Um, during teaching, away from, uh, the rear-facing offices. It's been tremendous disruption, not to speak of all the other things that have gone on with the water problems and the noise and the parking. Noise I have now with this particular chiller, I understand those issues were already, um, addressed and dealt with in two thousand and eighteen on, at the meeting that unfortunately uh, we didn't know about, even though I understand legally it was, um, announced in the proper way, but unfortunately, those who were most directly affected had no idea what's happening. Um, but right now, um, the noise levels, um, from our rear-facing, it's not a minor thing to be rear-facing, and we're not at a corner. It's directly adjacent. I have, there's all kinds of other issues. I don't know how to get into them. New water intrusion in my basement that we never had before. A constant noise impact on, you know, birds and we have a native plant garden. There's, uh, impacts on, um, pollinators and birds, um, all kinds of things. Um, but with the issue of, um, of the chiller, this is going to impact, the sound is very well.
Talking to the chair?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah.
Who's speaking?
Dennis, um, we're concerned about the noise, and I know that my next-door neighbor is as well, and we've been tremendously patient, but it's reached a point where it's just too much. And this one is dignity. Could we at least not have this constantly running chiller and generator right at our property? I mean, it's too much.
Mr. Potter, you had mentioned, I think, Dennis Hadasco, is he supposed to be your planner tonight?
Yes, but.
Okay, because he's trying, I think, to get into the meeting, so.
Oh, really? Okay.
I believe so.
Computer had crashed. Uh, he called me to say.
Okay, well, because I thought I just saw him appear.
His name is on the screen, but he's muted.
Okay, okay, well.
His, his picture is not on the screen, his name is.
Okay, uh, since you're talking about me, I gather I'm connected?
You're connected, but we can't see you.
I, I don't know what to do about that. My, my main computer crashed. I picked up a laptop that I'm using here. Uh, so just Bill, so you know I'm here. Uh, if audio testimony will do, I, I hope that will suffice. I have no images to present.
Okay, Karen, is that acceptable to have a witness who is solely testifying au- audio?
Well, ordinarily, we would, we would say no. Mr. Kennedy, uh, you have objection to that?
Um, I, I've spoken, spoken extensively with Dennis, um, over the last, uh, couple of days. I recognize his voice.
Okay, that's fun.
We're, we're.
All right, well.
Applicant here is, is very interested in, in.
And getting.
And, and getting this, uh, and, and all fairness to them, uh, I won't object.
All right.
Thank you, Ryan.
So, Mr. Hadasco, when, when you're ready to testify, we'll swear you in, but let's see if we can finish with, uh, Ms. Massnak first.
Thank you very much. Julia, I'm sorry for the interruption. It's.
No problems.
Okay. So you were listing your concerns and you were about to address the noise issue.
Yes, I think there's been tremendous noise issues through the whole project, um, and various other, um, concerns and, um, and problems of various sorts, but I know they're not what's on the table tonight. So I'll just say that here we are at the end of it, to have this chiller now placed right at our property lines. Again, as I said, I'm not at the corner. I'm directly um, adjacent, um, our garden and our two offices, um, is, and of course, my next-door neighbor, Graham Lord. This is, it's why, it's enough. So the noise, I'm worried about that noise being ongoing. We also have a musician who's downstairs, right opposite from it. We have a music room downstairs with a piano. My next-door neighbor is also a musician. It's a real thing for us. And it's like, why should we have to live in this situation? We're in a cul-de-sac on Evelyn, quiet historic street, and our life has been completely upended by this project.
Thank you very much, Julia. I'm terribly sorry that.
I'll add that I've never met Mr. King before, so it's a pleasure to meet you, sir, and I'm sure you're an ethical person, but I wish that you would come to speak with us. And I never received notice of the, we seen also the receipt slips of the notification of the two thousand and eighteen hearing. Someone signed my name incorrectly. It's not my, anyone in my household, and also my next-door neighbor, someone else signed it. We never saw it.
Yeah, I'm afraid that issue's off the table. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, are there questions for, for Mrs. Mastack? Okay.
How far, I do have one question. Um, how far back is your house setback from Nassau Street?
I'm, I'm the second house in, so.
You're the second house then, okay, I'm sorry.
The one on the corner. I'm the second house in from Nassau.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that was it.
Thank you very much, Julia. Well, it's swearing Dennis now.
Michael?
Oh, I'm sorry.
While we're on the subject of which houses, um, could Mr. Potter clarify for me who we represent, is, do you represent other property owners?
I only represent, yes, Michael, uh, I only represent Julie at this point. Uh, I think she's, she's trying to round up some of the neighbors.
Well, I wouldn't say I'm rounding up, but I've been in, in regular consultation, um, with my next-door neighbor. So far, I signed the, um, the, the check.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, now, Mr. Hadasco.
Hello.
Hi.
Are we good? You still here?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Yes.
Dennis Hadasco, we're gonna swear you in. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
And then, Mr. Potter, I assume you'll qualify, Mr. Hadasco, for the board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hadasco, uh, would you please describe your educational background?
Yeah, uh, I'm a graduate of Rutgers, uh, both undergraduate and graduate planning programs. And, uh, I guess I'll just move ahead with the other things. I, I've been a licensed planner since nineteen seventy-five. Uh, I've appeared before numerous boards throughout the state. Uh, I was the director of, uh, City of Elizabeth Planning Program for a decade. Um, but, uh, with, I was with a couple of other firms, T and M Associates, you may be familiar with, or Can Do Flesig. I've appeared before your board, and I'm looking at my records. Unfortunately, I had to change computers. Uh, but from my notes here, I appeared before you on behalf of Robert Hillier, which is a developer, Barsky Brothers developer, uh, several developers for Chris Tarr, and then, uh, a number of, uh, objector groups. So I've appeared before your board and accepted as a qualified.
Mr. Hadasco, I, I believe you have the professional qualifications. Do you have, as a planner, do you have acoustical credentials?
Uh, only in a general sense, not as a, a specified acoustic expert, and I have not prepared any acoustic analysis.
Okay, thank you. And we would accept him as a planner.
Miss Chairman Cohen, just, um, I, I have no objection to his, uh, being accepted as a planner. I just want to just clarify, though, that it is just a planner and not an engineering expertise, is that?
That's correct.
As he, as he stated, he has no acoustic, acoustical qualifications.
Well, I, I would, perhaps you might, uh, amend that. I, I think you need to recognize that a planner has to take into a, uh, account all kinds of factors in which he's not separately an expert. Uh, traffic, um, stormwater, um.
Why don't we, why don't we allow him to testify and then we'll, then we'll, uh, question what we.
I think that'd be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, sure. I'll just go very quickly to kind of save a little time. Uh, essentially, my role here is to, uh, give you testimony as to whether what's being proposed, specifically the variance for the chiller, would do harm to the intent and purpose of your zoning ordinance. And I think you understand that. And, and that's what I'm going to speak about. So the question is, in this case, we're talking about the flexible C, is whether there's any substantial detriment relative to the benefits that are provided. Now, uh, in the prior hearing, you've already decided that there are benefits, the historic preservation by having this various development. And at that time, it was indicated, uh, that the chiller would be located roughly where it is, and the compressors would be also located there. Uh, but there was no request for variance at that time. So the issue about detriment, uh, was not raised. And, and that's what's being raised now. Uh, as a planner, and I think, uh, probably any member of a board, and I've been a member of, uh, several planning boards and, uh, an environmental commission, the generally accepted measure of whether there's harm in a residential, the residential character of a residential zone is whether the noise anywhere on the property that people wish to enjoy the use of their land is above a conversational level, which is a fifty-decibel rate. Now, this doesn't require any expertise on my part. This is just a general consequential standard that's applied in planning. In this case, you understand the applicant is contending that the neighboring property owner should not be able to enjoy their driveway area or the area outside their house as intended by the zone ordinance. I think that's actually an admission of exactly what this objection is all about and why the variance, I would say, can be conditioned upon meeting that as a performance standard. Um, and I've worked with many aboard, and I think it's the best way to do it. It gives the applicant the ability to go back, as they did with the stormwater uh, planning, work it out, have your municipal engineer be able to determine whether the study submitted meet the fifty-decibel uh, level, bring it back to the board as an ministerial action, and proceed that way. And I don't think we need to get into a lot of debates or a lot of expert aspects. So, uh, that's my opinion. Any questions?
So just to clarify, Dennis, you're saying that there is, uh, a significant detriment, uh, which however, uh, could be mitigated or something like that?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you very much. Um, he's open to questioning from the board or Mr. Kennedy.
Well, I guess my, my question would be, again, um, is there a municipal ordinance that talks about the noise level at, I just lost my screen. Can you guys hear me?
You.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just lost my screen, son of a gun. I, is there a municipal requirement for the noise level at the property line?
Uh, well, I'm not talking about a ordinance standard. I'm talking about whether there would be substantial detriment by granting the variance. Now, you do have a provision that I found online, and unfortunately, I don't have a current paper copy. But there's a provision that talked about having any kind of sound level in a residential area above 75 decibels at any frequency for more than 15 minutes. Now, this unit, as I understand from spec sheets that I found online for Carrier, was 86 decibels at the unit. Now, sound does not attenuate that rapidly. It's an exponential kind of thing. And when you're talking about the difference above 50 at the property line, you would violate that at certain frequencies. There is a graph that was provided by Carrier. The applicant should have that available or certainly could submit it. But it does not demonstrate the possibility of compliance without putting some further attenuating measures in. And I think those can be done. But that is an ordinance provision. I'm not raising the question of whether it takes a variance because to whether this violates it for 15 minutes at a given frequency, et cetera, that's an area for experts to get into and debate over. I'm dealing simply with a variance issue that says, can you put that chiller in a place that wasn't proposed before without causing this kind of detriment? And I would, my opinion would be, no, you can't.
Thank you, Mr. Hadasco. I'm glad you found another computer, so you testified.
I'd like to ask him a question. You take into account the six-foot wooden fence that's going across the property line?
Well, I can't take anything into account. As you know, I'm not doing an analysis. They testified, they had an analysis that put that at 65 decibels, 35 feet away, I think it was.
I thought you said 30, 55 decibels.
55 decibels at 30 feet away, I believe.
Without the, without the wooden
Without the fence. Well, you know, that's violation.
Oh, is it? Without the wooden
Well, I'm sorry. I got confused about violation versus a substantial detriment. That would be a substantial detriment. It would not be a violation necessarily. Now, that, I believe that they're referring to what's called a weighted average of the frequencies. And what makes an impact is for one particular frequency to reach that level. And they provide a chart showing different levels at different points. So if their weighted average is 55, that would imply that there are some frequencies that it's going to be well above that. Just, I'm just trying to get you to understand how it works.
Take into account without the wooden fence, is that correct?
Yes.
So the wooden fence would have some effect on that?
It could, and I, I try to raise questions and have a dialogue with the, I guess, the expert they had regarding this. Because I don't know where the sound is emanating from on this chiller. The, the fan exits are at six feet and probably higher after it's on a platform, and therefore over the fence. And if that's the source of the noise, well, then there will be no attenuation from the fence whatsoever.
The fans don't make the noise.
And, well, that may be the exit for all the, any kind of, you know, sound that comes out of the unit. Secondly, sound waves will always go over a fence and reform to some degree. Fences may reflect sound to a degree. And in this case, it's in a very narrow area with a tall building that will again reflect the sound off the fence, back to the building, back over the fence, and also directly produce sound that reflects off the building over the fence. So if you have an acoustic expert, that would be what you'd want them to tell you is that they've done a measurement and show that nowhere on the residential property line are you impairing their ability to have a conversation. And I think that would be the standard to hold them to, have them produce all the analysis that can be produced. And if they fail to install a unit that complies with post-development testing, then they should not be allowed to continue with their CO.
I don't know who's calling.
Michael?
Steve? Chairman?
I'm sorry, I was looking something up on Sound, excuse me.
Quickly say one comment, which again is that our
I think Michael had a chance.
No, to add on this
Wait, can
Michael had a chance.
Michael, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I think we're at the point, unless you do strike a compromise, there's been no expert testimony by a sound person. So I'm going to have a hard time making any decision because we already agreed that Mr. Potter's planner that he brought on is not an expert. And I haven't seen any sound expert introduced by the applicant. So we can go around in circles if we want to.
Thank you, Michael. Long time no see.
Yeah, Bill.
Good to see you.
And that is the reason that I gave the recommendation that you simply grant the variance, conditioned upon a showing that the equipment that's installed complies and will continue to comply in order to maintain the variance and the occupancy.
I think Mr. Floyd is suggesting
I think, I think when you made that recommendation, you recommended that municipal staff do the sound determination. I don't think that's proper. That's the applicant's responsibility.
No, what I recommended was that the applicant produce the analysis by an expert, the way they do an engineering drawing for stormwater, and that your staff review it as they would review any other document. I believe they're competent to do that kind of a review.
But we grant the variance now with the stipulation for that kind of review. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes. And then it puts the burden on the applicant to solve the problem, which I believe is solvable. I don't think it's solvable tonight.
Mr. Chairman, though, just, if I could follow up a question there, there hasn't been, and Mr. Bridger testified before, as did Mr. Potter, there's not a specific municipal standard on this. So I'm concerned, and the applicant is willing to continue to work towards making this the, you know, the best situation that's possible for, for the neighbors here. But I'm concerned that there's, there's a conflation of, of Mr., of this planner's testimony on what he thinks is a detriment with a municipal standard that we, doesn't exist in Princeton. So I want to be very clear about what we're thinking about asking it to compare to. You know, we, he mentioned 50 feet at the lot line. That's not a standard that Princeton has. So I want to be, first, just ask what, where that standard comes from and what you're suggesting we test to, so that we can at least understand what, what what a third party or an expert would be, you know, to model it is one thing, but to achieve some type of standard is, is another. When we're talking about a variance, where again, as you testified before, I think various different people could differ on what is a detriment or whether the detriment is outweighed by the other elements of variance analysis. It's not necessarily a yes or no standard.
I agree that we have to have, if we're going to do that, we have to have some basis. We have to have some criteria for its acceptance.
Yeah, I think I gave you that in testimony, but I'll, I'll point it out again. The generally accepted standard, okay, under zoning for a residential character is to have sound levels that allow conversation anywhere on the residential property. The sound levels that are considered to be conversational levels are at 50 decibels.
But that's, is that a, is that a, when you say generally, generally is based on what? I mean, where is, where did you get that criteria from?
That is
Is it a published, is it a published standard?
Yes, it is. As a matter of fact, the state of New Jersey, Department of Environmental, I'm sorry, Department of Environmental Protection adopted that standard, I believe, for residential areas. And Bill may be able to provide with that document.
Or someone could. I mean, what the, Mr. Kamalik, I think testified before that like conversation at a restaurant, for example, or a window air conditioning unit is 60 decibels. Certainly, those are not prohibited in Princeton. So again, I, absent a standard, we had testimony that this at 30 feet was 58 decibels. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Potter's client, I don't think anyone's spoken about how far their property is, but they're not, this, there is a distance between this unit and their property line in excess of the, you know, this, this, this unit, you know, the 3.7 feet number is to one Evelyn place, not to three. So I'd be curious if, to know what, what that distance is to to their property line as well, and whether that exceeds the 10-foot variance requirement that, that even exists.
May I say, I'm a thing here, since my, just as a, as a property owner here and a neighbor impacted by this. Just to add that our offices are on the second floor. I'm certainly no acoustical expert, which, you know, I'd be happy to bring in to estimate. But really, the sound in our offices was, has been really, it travels up, and we hear it quite loudly. And right behind the fence is not how sound travels. Again, I'm not an expert, but I'm just telling you that I have been unable, and my husband has been unable to use our offices. That's not scientific. I'm just telling you our experience as residents and taxpayers in Princeton.
Well, it's difficult to assess the, the issues of sound when you're under, when a project is under construction.
I'm fully aware of that, fully respectfully. I have a PhD from Harvard. I'm a Princeton professor. I understand that basic standard. And I didn't add that in because I thought it was obvious. But yes, all I'm saying is that sound travels, as we all know, I'm not an expert.
Yes.
Much worse up in my office than it is in the backyard, but also our backyard, we've not been able to use. And of course, this is during construction. I'm not giving expert testimony. I'm just a taxpayer of Princeton.
Mr. Hadasco, I have a question for you. I quickly looked up something here at DP called the Noise Control Act. And what it says is, okay, within noise regulations, there are established sound levels of 50 decibels during nighttime, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and 65 decibels during daytime. Is this what you were referring to? This Noise Control Act provides that municipal noise ordinances you know, are submitted to DP for review. But this is not the standard you were talking about, is it?
It may not necessarily be. What I'm saying is I've been in this field since the 1970s. And 50 decibels in a residential area has been the customary standard. You'll find it in many ordinances throughout the country. And I don't wish to quibble over a particular number. Human ears are not that precise. Where damage occurs to one's actual hearing is much higher. So we're talking about a very qualitative issue. I'm giving you a standard that's accepted, that's been published, that appears in many town codes. If you wish, you know, you could write a condition that says that it meets published standards for other places. I'm, I'm just advising that what you've received does not do the job. It does leave a residual of substantial detriment to, and I want to make this part clear, not to Mrs. Mastack's property, but to the residential district in which both of these homes are located. And it's the properties, not their homes. You know, we created single-family districts so that people could sit in the backyard or, you know, have their children play or wash their car and be able to conduct it as if they were not in an industrial district. That's why these standards came about. And so here we have a building that's placed next door to a residential property line. There was apparently a thought that this could be accomplished without creating that detriment. I'm sure there was no malevolent intent. But unfortunately, as this thing is unwound and the project developed, something's happened here where the choice of equipment either prohibits some other solution or, I think more to the point, the applicant didn't realize that this would actually be a substantial detriment to the, the zone. And I think that's what the board needs to understand. I think the applicant needs to simply be directed that that's the intent of this ordinance, and to do otherwise would do harm to it. And therefore, the variance can't be granted without some kind of condition of this type.
Chairman Cohen?
If we're going to have, if we're going to have a standard that this is going to be judged by, we have to have a criteria. We have to have that standard. We can't leave it, we can't have no standard if we're going to, if we're going to require that this meet a certain standard. We have to define what that standard is.
Yeah, I think you have two choices. One, you know, we're not going to come up with a standard tonight that everybody's going to be happy with. So you have, I think, the option to say that they need to meet a standard that's generally accepted by other municipalities. Now, if you find a big variance in that these days, I would be surprised. Okay, but you could take that chance. Or the other approach is simply adjourn the hearing, have them come back, demonstrate what they have, you decide the standard, and do it that way.
Well, I think, I think trying to
Mr. Chairman, I just, I, I just want to say that this feels like it's the second time since I've been on the board that it feels as, I feel as though we might want to have, I don't quite know how to frame it. I know that our attorney helped me last time a few years ago. And I thought, when I thought, it seems like we need more information. It doesn't quite seem like we ought to take a vote tonight. But I don't quite, I'm not one to want to procrastinate something if we could come to a resolution, but it seems like there are, we're doing a lot of trying to pull things together and not having all the information we might have.
What I, what I was getting to, what I was getting to is, I think, trying to say that, that will, will, the standard will be as generally accepted in other municipalities is too broad. It doesn't give, it doesn't give a specific criteria. I think, I think in light of the fact that the applicant doesn't know exactly what the sound would be at the property line, which I guess is what we're arguing about, or what he might do to mitigate that, I think it's going to be difficult for us to make a determination tonight. I, I am not saying that, that this whole system will not work, but I don't think we have enough information right now to make that determination.
I'd like to make one comment, and that is, as I understand, the municipal noise ordinance is in effect and essentially could be applied as a condition?
There's no standard in the ordinance. It's as
That was the question I had asked, yeah.
There's no standard, but it's not a standard in terms of decibels. There's a standard, it's plainly audible, and there's a, there's a nuisance standard that is used, but it's not a decibel.
Your attorney say 65 decibels in the day and
Well, what I was referring to, George, I had just gone online briefly and found something on the DP website about what they call the Noise Control Act. So this, so DP was referencing this standard about, I think I said 50 decibels in the evening and not more than 65 during daytime hours. But Derek, does the town's ordinance, have they adopted like a model noise ordinance from the state, or what? The town is deferring to whatever the state would prescribe, right?
The ordinance doesn't refer to the state. It, it refers to different types of noises, continuous noises and nuisance factors. And it doesn't have standards. The state does have standards, obviously, you're correct. It's, I believe, 50 in the evening and 65 in the day, and
So, so if we had a complaint about a noise level, the determination as to whether it was annoying or nuisance would be based on, I guess, what, looking at what the state standard is, or would it be more of a, you know, go out and hear it yourself and say, yeah, that's, that's very loud?
I think the state standard would eventually get pulled into it. I believe the state standard supersedes local, but I'm not sure. So
But it would seem to make sense that in, in absence of a standard on our part, we would defer to the state.
All right. Well, the question, I guess, is for tonight. I don't know that we have the I don't know that we have the ability or if we're going to take the time now to go online and research what that is. So we've heard from Mr. Hadasco, he's talking about, should we say, a generally accepted standard or what he believes it is in other communities in New Jersey.
I really do amend my testimony to the 50 and 65 that you pointed out.
Okay, so I don't know if that could work for the board. And again, I'm doing this, you know, during the meeting, looking this up. I believe this local, this noise control act is in effect, but I can't tell you that definitively.
Yeah, I try to, I, I try to find something online and, and I got a noise, I have a Noise Control Act here.
Yeah.
That's in New Jersey, what is it? New Jersey NJCC 13.1G.
Okay.
Excuse me, NJCC 7:29 Noise Control. But I don't think it has, it doesn't refer to residential properties. And, and I'm, I'm sort of trying to get to something quickly, which I can't get. I think, I think, first of all, I think, and, and Mr. King, Mr. Kamalcheck, you don't know what the sound level is at the property line of the equipment that you're going to use.
Well, I guess, I guess, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but Steve, isn't the question also not just at the property line? But if I'm living within a close proximity to a property, even if it's not at my property line, if, if the, if the decibel level is such on my property that it's exceeding, you know, if we say 50 at night and 60 during the daytime, do you think that's controlling, that it's at the-
Where would, where would that be on an adjacent property? I mean, that's somewhat arbitrary. So you'd have to look at it at the property line, I think. You'd have to say at the property line, like we have light spillage onto adjacent property.
See, that's why if we had time to look at this Noise Control Act, because it says, you know, the state in Jersey authorizes DP to promulgate codes, rules and regulations regarding control and abatement of noise. Department has a model noise ordinance, which Princeton apparently hasn't adopted. But apparently there are noise regulations adopted by DP. We just have not been able to look at them tonight.
I think we have, I think we have to have that information before, before we can make a study, a study recommendation. What about the other board members? How do you feel about that?
I think you're right, and I think that Eve is right. If, if the objector is objecting to a noise and we can't quantify what the noise is and we don't really know what standards you use to quantify the noise from a chiller unit, then I think that we have to ask the applicant and the objector to find us those standards and, and find us what the reality is going to be with this unit installed so that we can make a determination.
Yeah. I think we also need to talk to our town engineer to see if he can give us some guidance on this. But we need, I don't think we have enough tonight. I don't want to, I'd rather not delay this. I can appreciate the position that, that the applicant's in, but I don't think we can really make a decision tonight without more information.
It, it also almost seems to me like there might be two levels. There might be a, it's so loud, call the police, and just like a basic quality of life, you know, reasonable. I, I, I don't even know. I mean, and-
Quality of life, I mean, you can't, I, I, I still go back to the property line as some sort of guide. Because again, you know, it's, it's, you know, that's really, that's really where our jurisdiction is. We can't say, well, anywhere in the backyard or the front yard or the kitchen, you know, and it's, it's, it's at the property line. Again, my feeling, but, but I don't know enough about that to make a decision.
You know, there's also, I'm just going to throw in, there's a group called Quiet Princeton that might have done some of the research, although they have, they focus on the leaf blowers and stuff, but just saying. They might be able to help us get there quick. I don't know.
Michael?
I'll go back again. Even a local group, it doesn't replace expert testimony.
Right. Well, they might know the experts.
We're doing, I don't really care what their answers are. It's really, we need some expert testimony.
Right, that's right.
They don't-
We have a lot of conjecture and we need-
And, and this isn't an expert. You know, the most recent time we went through this was with the hotel and, and, and Bank Street, which is residential, that is adjacent to a-
Right.
A, a, a non-residential. And there were expert testimony and there's also mediation measurements on, you know, okay, it, it, it does generate X, but if there's a fence there, as Steve was saying earlier, you know, there's mediation and there's testimony to that. So-
I think, I think, Michael, I think you're right. We need, we need really some expert testimony with regard to this, the system, the sound levels and any potential remediation or, or corrective measures that need to be taken. For instance, it could be instead of a wood fence, it could be a masonry wall, you know, or something to that effect. But I think we need to, we need to, to wait to make a decision until we have more information.
Yeah, I'd just like to make one comment, and that is that state noise guidance strikes me as a, a good yardstick to use in the absence of having competing experts argue over as to which is generally accepted and which is not. And, and so, and I'm sure that, you know, there was some research that went into that formulation. So in terms of what mitigation, if you can meet that standard, that strikes me as a reasonable way to proceed, but, you know, I'm open to, to-
No, I mean, Georgia, I would agree with you. But again, we don't know, we don't know enough about the, the sound level at various points away from the unit to really understand what that's going to be. And you're right.
Could I, could I, I'd like to add a-
Yeah, what I'm saying is that, yes, there's a whole sort of fact pattern as to the noise level that needs to be developed. But if it meets the regulatory framework, then that would be my inclination to go with that.
I, I agree.
I agree.
But we have to know, we have to know from the, from the applicant what that, what those noise levels are.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I, can I throw something in here? I, I've been writing zoning ordinances, like I said, since the 1970s. We've developed for numerous towns, performance ordinances on sound levels. And the 50 decibel and the 65 are drawn from conversation. The 65, I believe, is what they call like loud conversation, restaurant, bar kind of thing. And that's why many people have adopted that as a daytime standard and the 50 at nighttime because it's normal conversational level. Drawing up ordinances is, is not a matter of expertise on individual properties. It's about the performance. It's about the consequences or the results. And so it's a very broad standard. I have to say, there's nothing very finite about picking 65 or 64, 63 or 62. It's going to be in the general vicinity. But a number has to be drawn when you do an ordinance, as you say, a standard. I believe Princeton would do well to have this researched and have their planner adopt an ordinance that would guide you in these cases.
I, I agree with you.
Yes. The purpose of using an expert in acoustical situations is to demonstrate that a variance can be granted without the detriment by looking at all the specifics. But it's like the setback. You have a 10-foot setback. I can tell you, there is nothing out there where somebody used a micrometer to determine that 10 feet is the appropriate setback distance. And when you look at the intrusion and you look at a variance of a foot or two or three, this is a broad judgment call about what it does in that particular part of the zone and how it affects the people in the most general way, not in a specific way. And I don't think you need to go beyond this evening to research this further. I think, you know, it, it's pretty clear that the state itself, in choosing a standard, has chosen a daytime and nighttime standard. That is the standard that I mentioned that many new municipalities have adopted. And I have to say, I'm not really aware of any municipalities that have done other than create a more complex table with different frequencies. That is the simplest standard. And I think that you could adopt that as the standard for the applicant to solve the problem and, and be able to just simply come back and demonstrate through its, through its expert that it's met it, the standard, and have your, your municipal staff simply review it and advise you whether or not they need a hearing because it's, you know, questionable or not.
Okay, I'd like to ask you a question, Mr. Hadasco. If you're going to say that there's a, a daytime standard of 65 and a nighttime standard of 50, where is that relative to a property line for a structure? In other words, is that anywhere on the site of the adjacent site?
Yes. As I testified earlier, the purpose is to protect the character of the district. Doesn't matter whether there's even a house on the property. We're protecting the character of that district. The line is drawn. Those homes are in the district and that's what we're trying to protect the character of their land.
So you're basically, if that's the case, then you're saying the closest point of an adjacent property?
Right. Well, it, it shouldn't exceed it on any residential property.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's basically what you're saying. So you're saying if we have a, an air handling unit that's three, five, eight feet away from a property line, at that property line, then the standard should not exceed 50 during the evening and 65 during the day?
Right. As measured on the residential side of any fence or-
Well, I mean, it's, it's, what it is, is the property line, whether it's, it would be, it would be on the, yes, the, the, if you have a fence, it would be on the residential side of the fence. I understand that. All right. Well, that's something we need to consider. But we don't know that because we don't know what the unit itself is going to do.
Right. That's why I'm saying if you condition the approval on them designing the unit to meet that, I think that meets the intent of what a variance should do.
Well, I'm, you know, I, I can't speak for the other board members and I'm not questioning your, your criteria of 50 and 65, but I don't know that. Michael, do you want to say something?
I was just wondering if the applicant or Mr. Kennedy for the applicant wants to weigh in on any of this?
Sure.
Well, I certainly, I certainly, I certainly have no problem with doing a study. I have, I've got Bolt Baronak and Newman of Boston is one of the larger acoustic consultants in the United States. And they've done a lot of work for me historically. So I have no problem doing the study. I'd just like to know what the standards are that we have to meet so that I can do the study in that context. Because you, I heard all the, the, the comments today, but without seeing specific examples that relate to all this discussion, I'm not sure how it applies to our town.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you and I'm trying to figure out some basis to ask you to do that study.
I'm more than happy to do it. I just need to have some, something guidelines from, from you as to what, what I have to, what we have to study against to see where we, where we fall.
Steve, Derek, Derek has to say it though.
Derek?
There was a recent case at the university for the Tiger system, which is a geothermal exchange unit. And there was substantial discussion and eventually a lawsuit about the noise levels. And at that hearing, and I can trust Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Potter can do their research, but I think the state guidelines do supersede local guidelines. And if that's the case, that would be the standard. So I would research that.
So what you mean, you, do you know what that standard is right now?
It's 55 at night and 65 during the day.
Okay, all right.
But I, I mean, that's based on my watching those hearings and hearing testimony from other professionals, so.
Okay.
I recall, but-
And, and I'll, I'll say that to the extent that is a state standard, and I agree with Mr. Bridger, that if, if it is one, it supersedes anything the town would do. It's, unfortunately, this board couldn't necessarily, if we asked for a variance from a state standard, unless you've been delegated that authority, you couldn't give that to us. So absent a municipal ordinance on this that you could grant us a variance from, imagine the, the state standard would have to control and, and perhaps Mr. King can, you know, would just have to comply whether, if you just granted the variance conditioned or not. And, and I'm, I'm hearing, and I'm not stipulating to this, but I'm, I'm hearing that there, there are maybe two questions for the board. One is, you know, to, to do some more research to find out what the standard is. But if there was a definitive information of the standard or to have the condition itself defer to what that standard is, and I, I think Mr. Bridger is, as usual, correct, it's likely that state DEP standard. You know, they're, they're really, I'd love to ask you for a variance from that, but I don't think you could grant it. So it, it sounds like the, the option would be to, to grant the variance conditioned on meeting the, the state standard if, and if that is it, that, that's the standard. Even if you didn't grant a condition, we'd have to meet that standard regardless because it's a state requirement for commercial property and sound at a residential lot lot. So I, what I'm hearing perhaps are those are the two options. One is to, to think about and perhaps develop a, a standard for the town. And, and I, I think I agree with Mr. Hadasco, you know, that is something the town should do. Perhaps it's more appropriately a, a referral from this board in your annual report and, and the town, the planning department and council to take up for what it should be, if it should be different than a state standard.
Yeah, well, we can't take the time, I think, to study and develop a standard for the town based on this application. It's unfair to the applicant. I would, I would think that if the applicant is willing to do us an acoustical study based on a criteria of 55 and 65, Derek? Or 50 and 65?
It's 50 and 65.
65. And this, let me ask you, is that at the, again, I keep coming back to this, is that at the property line?
I mean, just common sense, it would have to be at the property line.
Okay, good. And I agree with that.
Distance, you know?
Okay. So, Mr. King, is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay, so let's, so let's do that. And do you think you could have that available for the next meeting?
When, when's the next meeting?
October 27th.
Oh, I'll have it long before that.
Okay. All right. Good. Yes, Ms.? I can't understand, I can't understand you.
Can you hear okay now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. So if we wanted to also have our own study with that, also would the board also take that into consideration as a neighbor?
Sure, sure.
Yes.
You want to have your own study, of course.
So, just, just so I'm clear though, if, if, I think what, what Mr. Hadesco had suggested before and, and makes sense is if, if that is the standard to, to grant the, the approval conditioned on meeting that, you know, and that's, that's a, you know, an administrative item, just like we would with, you know, either like a Land State Scape Subcommittee or Stormwater Report. I mean, it's going to be a yes or no, and, and certainly we could agree to contrary evidence being presented for the town engineer to confirm. But, and I, because I, I think it's, it's a standard that the, the, the board can't grant a variance against the state standard. I'm not sure what we, we would do.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's a matter, do we, Michael, just give me one second, I'll let you speak. If, if, if you're asking us to approve it tonight based on, you know, you know, us meeting that criteria and having it approved by our engineer, I, I think we would all like to know what that study is going to say. And, and I for one would like to see it. So I'm, I'm really not in favor of voting tonight one way or the other for a variance at this point based on, based on meeting that criteria. Michael? Michael?
Yeah. I agree with you. I think also, for me, the other consideration is it could be the standard, yes. But then there's the question that each expert can debate about mediation techniques and whether that really generates a lower decibel level. And there may not be agreement between both sides on that. And we'll have to hear that and decide.
Mitigation of sound sometimes has to do with masks. So a wood fence is not as effective as a masonry wall. And maybe that's, maybe those are alternatives that would come out of the study that Mr. King will do that would require another type of variance. So I would think that if we can do that, and if it's acceptable to Mr. King, then we'll take this next month and get that taken care of. Is that all right?
It's okay with me.
Okay, so is that, the other board members, does that seem to be an acceptable situation?
Yeah, with me it is.
Yes.
I just have, I have another thought. And, you know, of course, none of us are, I'm not an expert on this. But I know you're really kind of married to the idea that the line, that the property line is where to measure. And I keep wondering if there isn't some kind of, you know, if there could be echoing off surfaces that could make it worse in the middle.
Acoustical study, an acoustical study will show all that.
Okay, that's what I wanted. I just hope we're not, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to be done in a vacuum. It has to take into account where the unit is located and what's around it. Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, what if it's louder in the middle of a property than it is at the property line?
Well, I mean, again, there has to be.
Is that not, not our worry? I mean, I think that would be so.
I mean, I think the state standard, Derek, and maybe I'm wrong, but the state standard really would be, because the further away from you are from the unit itself, from the the source of the sound, the lesser the theoretically, the lower the sound level should be. Now, obviously, there's echoes and things like that. But, so I think that the fifty and sixty-five at least is a basis to do the study. I think, Mr. King, your acoustical experts would be far more qualified to answer these questions than I would. But I think an acoustical study would really be appropriate.
Yeah, I'd like to make additional comment in terms of mitigation, which might lead to a variance before us. You might need a fence higher than six feet. And Mr. Bridge, correct me if I'm wrong, you would need a variance if you had an eight-foot or a nine-foot fence.
Yes, sir.
That might be a real buffer against sound. And I suspect, Mr. King, your acoustical engineers and experts would be able to address that sort of mitigation calibration.
They will.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of other techniques. So they'll, they'll, they'll address all that.
I agree.
Steve, I know the hour is late. I don't know if there's other people in the public who wanted to comment.
Yeah, there are two people that raised their hands, Mr. Lord and Ms. Dale Mead.
All right, so Mr. Lord lives next door, right, to Ms. Masnick? So he's your next-door neighbor, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Do you want, does the board want to allow these other two individuals to testify tonight?
Oh, I think it, I think it's important that they do right now.
All right. Mr. Lord, could you give us your address, please?
One Evelyn Place.
All right, and you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Of course.
Thank you.
It seems to be, you've had a lot of discussion, but you don't make a distinction between residential and non-residential. And you keep quoting these figures of fifty decibels and sixty-five decibels. But is that for being in a railroad yard next to a football stadium or on a quiet residential street as we are? So as you examine what these permissible levels are, you should take account of the location where the noise is. But I have other comments that have nothing to do with the chiller. So if you just bear with me, I just want this one question. Because in the beginning comments that Mr. Kennedy made, he spoke about where the garbage and the generator was going to be. And he referred it to be in the northwest back corner of the property. He doesn't say, he didn't say that, I guess he did.
I'm maybe directionally impaired, but not the property line that is shared with three Evelyn. It's the, if you were to enter the property from, maybe our engineers should testify to this. I was just commenting initially, but this is the facing Nassau Street, facing the property. This is the back right corner, not the corner that's adjacent to.
Yeah, since Nassau Street is essentially east-west and Evelyn Place is north-south, that would be the northeast corner, not the northwest.
I trust that you're correct.
Yes, well, your plan is northeast corner. So I just wanted to clarify that you're not shifting the garbage to our property.
Search crews are looking for Brian Laundrie, the fiance of Gabby Petito. Northport Police down in Florida posted Carlton Reserve. That's a twenty-five thousand.
Is that done?
Okay.
That was above sixty-five decibels.
Didn't come from my property.
No, I know.
Yeah. Now here is perhaps a spanner in the works. Could not the chiller be a different location?
It's possible. Certainly, certainly possible.
Because I think a lot of the concerns that the, my neighbors are having could be solved if it was on the the eastern side, rather, on the western side of, of your place.
Well, we'll examine that as part of this acoustic study.
Yeah. And the other issue was, is that our picket fence, not the one that's between the two of us, but the one that goes along Nassau Street, was falling down. And we wanted to get it replaced. And we were told that Princeton has a height ordinances on fences. And what we wanted to replace it with, a six-foot fence, was not permissible.
Excuse me, a six-foot fence is permissible. Unless you're on a corner, then there's a site triangle issue for traffic so that you can see oncoming vehicles, which I think you are on the corner, right?
No, we're not on the corner.
Who's one Evelyn?
I'm one Evelyn, but.
Aren't you on the corner Nassau and Evelyn?
Yes, but there's no fence.
Well, the only, the only consideration with the six-foot height requirement is if there is a corner, then there's a site triangle issue where the fence or could be a hedge cannot be higher than three feet so you can see the oncoming traffic and they can see you. So a six-foot fence is permitted. You can give me a call tomorrow and I can go over the permitting process.
Yeah. So the question then comes if, if a solution is to build a six-foot fence to shield the chiller, how far down does it go towards Nassau Street from, from the back? Does it go all the way from what Derek just said? It seems to imply it couldn't go all the way down to the sidewalk on Nassau Street. So where would it start?
It could go all the way to Nassau Street, but I think the determination of what type of fence will be driven by their information from their sound engineer and their expert.
Yeah, the trouble is with a six-foot fence all the way to Nassau Street is that I wouldn't be able to see who's coming as they come out of our driveway.
Sure. Well, I mean, I think Mr. King has offered to have discussions and he seems minimal to that, so I.
Oh, yeah, I'm not challenging that, but I was.
I understand, it's a good point.
The current, I believe the current design had a shift from four feet to six feet at some point near the where the existing building is for that reason. But again, we'd be happy to work with you.
Yeah, it still does. The path is still standing. You know, it's been a long evening, so I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Well, we should get, we'll have an acoustical study for the next hearing available before, I assume.
Are there anybody else? Dale Mead, okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can't, we can't see you though, Mr. Mead. Can you put your visual on or?
That's going to take some extra time, I'm sorry. Let me just do it audio.
All right, what's your address, Mr. Mead?
Forty-eight Oakland Street, Princeton, New Jersey. And my background is as an experimental physicist. And my interest has to do with loud noises from my neighbor's Generac generator that is about a hundred and ten feet away from me. But yet, when he runs it, it's very loud in my bedroom. And how does that happen? Well, that happens because the noise gets to my house by reflecting off the house across the street where the generator exhaust is directed towards the street, reflects off the neighbor's house across on the other side of the street into my house. So what I wanted to make a comment on was twofold. One, first, I remember a discussion between the town and borough councils five, six, seven years ago. Sometimes it's hard to keep track of exactly when it happened. But I swear that there is a Princeton ordinance on noise. And as I recall, just, you know, from my fuzzy memory at the moment, is that this is somewhat along the lines that Derek mentioned before. You know, fifty dB at night and sixty-five-ish or so during the day. And there were some other constraints on it that had to do with, you know, people were buzzing around about the landscapers and their leaf blowers and so on. That's what I think started part of that. But I thought there was an actual ordinance on this that I'm surprised isn't in effect with the zoning board. I see Derek has a comment.
Yeah, you have a great memory, Dale. The town did change the noise ordinance, I think it was either prior to the consolidation or right after consolidation. And there were standards in the previous ordinance and they were removed. And they went with this new ordinance that ten B twenty-one, which does not have a specific level of a dBs, decibels for night or day. But you're correct.
Well, at any rate, so that's one issue is, you know, what are, what are the constraints here? The second issue is, now that we're going to go away and do a study of the noise that potentially is generated. I think the chiller is probably the biggest source of noise for the neighbors. A very important physics issue has to do with the reflection of the sound from the chiller off the building, the Graves Building. You're in a little setback and it's almost like it's an acoustical reflector focusing the noise out forward to the neighbor. And that's something that's going to be extremely difficult to model theoretically and so on. And what is going to be needed is actual sound generation tests from a spot of the chiller. And then use that and measure the sound received at various points on the property in question. So that's my main comment is that when you do these studies, it's got to be a very site-specific study with the actual materials that are on the outside of the buildings. The comment about if you put a masonry wall into stop a sound, no. If it's, it acts as a reflector. And it would reflect the sound back to the wall of the Graves Building and bang right out into the neighbor's yard. So this is going to be, it has to be a very site-specific kind of experimental measurement itself, not a theoretical calculation. And of course, as then the system goes into operation, I'm sure that there will have to be validation of the as-built condition with the actual generator, chiller itself and the measurements on this property in question. And then thirdly, as I said, I'm troubled by my neighbor's situation where, of course, to minimize this house, the side of the Generac in his house, he pointed the exhaust towards the street and the neighbors. And I have a portable generator of my own that I worry keeps my neighbors awake whenever we have a power outage. So I try to design baffles and so on to reduce that. There are mitigation techniques with baffles that could be put on the outside of the Graves Building. There could be baffles and enclosures that would allow ventilation of the chiller and maintenance of the chiller and yet absorb the sound. But that would take real acoustical studies to do. But, so I think there are both opportunities to more accurately measure what is likely to happen. And if it goes off the rails, there are mitigation techniques that could be used to hold the sound down. And those are my comments. So you guys are on the right track after all the stirring around, et cetera, and so on, anyway. But I think you're making the right decision by doing the study and refining what the requirements really are. Because this is just one of many cases like this. It's all over the town with these new generators that are everybody's putting in. So thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments. Okay, Claudia, is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak? Yes.
Yes, Julia is back, Masnick.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, this won't take long. I just wanted to be clear on what the decision is. Is, I wanted to be clear on what the decision is. Is the board saying that then Mr. King can proceed with?
No. Mr. King will come back to us next month with a study, an acoustical study.
So these chillers and units will not be installed until this?
No, no, we're not, we're not, we're not voting this evening.
Oh, thank you.
Don't we have to vote on not voting?
I think we just, Karen, we just allow the hearing to be continued to the next, we take jurisdiction and there's no noticing required, is that right?
Correct. So I assume that's the consensus of the board, that this application will be carried to October twenty-seventh. The applicant will provide an acoustical study consistent with the discussion tonight. And the objectors, if they want to provide one, they can as well. And I guess the only request would be from the board to please get these studies into you so you have decent time so that you can look at it for both sides. Meaning if the objectors want to do one, well, then they should also give you an opportunity to look at theirs as well.
Derek, how soon before the hearing do these studies need to be to us?
Yeah, excuse me, sorry. Well, I would like Jim Purcell, the land use engineer, assistant municipal engineer, to be involved in looking at them. And I would hope that it could be three weeks prior to the hearing.
Okay.
For two weeks, I mean, two weeks.
Two weeks, okay. All right, so the, okay, so.
We have to write some kind of report and
Yeah.
Look at it and just review it.
Okay, so both, both, Mr. Potter, if your group is going to do a study and Mr. King, both of those have to be in two weeks prior to the meeting on the twenty-seventh. Yes, Ms.?
I would ask that as, of course, we're not professionals, so it will be a little bit harder for us to find someone if we decide we want to do a study. So grant it a little more time than the.
No, can't you do that quickly?
We can. Yeah, Julia, you underestimated me.
Hi, everyone.
Okay. Okay, are we in agreement? Two weeks prior to the twenty-seventh is what, the thirteenth? And I don't know what day that falls on. So if it's on a weekend, it has to be submitted before the weekend.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, a great day. Okay, good. So Wednesday, the thirteenth?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, well, thank you all, and and we'll continue this next month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, good night.
Good night.
Good night.